The BIA. Okay. Recently, I am, I was informed that the Lions Club, which has decorated the Common for winter holidays for many years, at least since I've been in town, has decided to not decorate it again. Thus, the BIA, feeling an obligation to the citizenry and the Common, has become efforts as, has begun efforts to decorate the Common and hopefully have businesses follow suit with soft white lights on the trees and around the Common walkways. Two soft bids have been received and two more are requested. So far, the bids range from $20,000 to $27,500. And the BIA just can't afford to support that by itself. So we recruited a consortium of local nonprofits and other organizations, including BSU, to help us in fundraising project. Many have contributed. In less than a week, donations and pledges for $8,500 have been received. There are two $2,000 donors, one $1,500 donor, and three individuals who've pledged $1,000 each. I believe businesses and citizens will rise to embrace the project. I believe it will be enjoyed by all those who give and those who aren't able. I want you to be aware, I wanted you to be aware of it, and I would be completely remiss if I did not ask you to join in and provide support for it. Certainly, the Town Council can stand behind a project with a significant donation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunt. Other citizens for citizen comment? Yes?
Hi, good evening. My name is Natalie Justice, 35 Evergreen Drive. I'm here to speak out against Mr. Wood and Mr. Chase's ordinance as a mom of teenagers, one of which I brought with me tonight. I am completely opposed to any recreational marijuana shops in Bridgewater. There is no need to put on this ballot to vote on, as you are elected officials, we have entrusted to make the right decision for our youth, which is to vote this ordinance down and preserve the ban. As a mom of children at the high school, I know firsthand all the issues there are, and having pot shops in this town will only add to it. It's hard enough being a parent today without elected officials sending the message that selling drugs in our town is an acceptable way to raise tax dollars. Please make the right decision for our town. Our children are relying on you to set a good example. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Yes, please.
Hello, it's Taylor Sullivan, 250 New Orleans Park. So I have a few things I want to talk about. First off, I'm here again to oppose Mr. Wood and Mr. Chase's ordinance. First off, I want to talk about the language on the ordinance, which talks about the law, which is almost used as a justification. So I'm a little bit upset about it because I've done my research. I've spoken with multiple attorneys. And that's, and I've even spoken with the Cannabis Control Commission, and that's totally inaccurate. The two dispensaries will never be allowed to convert if we have a ban. This was actually just clarified with Haven Center v. Born. So like Bridgewater, Born had a, they were a no town. Bridgewater was a no town. And Born, you know, the elected officials didn't want pot shops. So what they did is they passed a general bylaw, which is what we did. We passed a general bylaw. Unfortunately, they went to get a zoning ordinance, you know, to make it an ironclad ban, which is what we were all instructed to do if we were opposed to this. And it failed because they needed six votes and they only got five. Now, we were lucky enough, because of the majority of you wonderful counselors that care about children, we got the six votes to get our zoning. So we have an ironclad ban. So down in Born, Haven Center tried to take advantage of that and say, hey, Born only has a general bylaw. We can convert because we have a provisional license before July 1st. I believe it's 2017. And the, and the court ruled, no, they have a ban. That general bylaw stands. You can't convert. So we're in that situation, but we're even in better of a situation because we have a general and we have a zoning. We have an ironclad ban. And I want to tell everyone here who is doubting that, do your research, speak with attorneys, because this is just smoke and mirrors to try to get your minds to think that they have to be allowed to convert. They don't. Because if they were allowed to convert, Mr. Wood wouldn't try to be getting it on a ballot right now to vote. He's trying to reverse the ban. So, and if the state changed their regulations, we'd, we'd cross that road when we get there. But we're not there yet, and it's not going to happen because it's been clarified. So that's number one. And, you know, I'm really upset because there's been a counselor who has been doing this for years. It's a personal agenda. I don't know many of you men up here well, but I can bet to say that you would not be bringing, any of you would not be continuously bringing that up. And I think it's because you have the knowledge. You know that it's addictive and you know it's not good for our town, whatever way you want to put it. I really pray that those of you who have, you know, have chants, Mr. George, Mr. Perry, Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Souza, Mr. Columbodis, Mr. Moore, I ask you to please vote this down. And if the state forces it, it's one thing. You're supporting Mr. Wood's personal agenda here. You're not.
If I could kindly ask you to conclude your remarks.
Okay, thank you. So with that said, I feel this town government isn't working. If a counselor is able to continuously push his personal agenda, that's upsetting to me. I came out here with my kindergartner and brought her to a meeting like this because I care so much. And honestly, it makes my blood boil that a town, that there's just a couple of people in a town that are pushing for the town to sell drugs to make revenue. You guys are all intelligent people. You're sacrificing your time with your families and at home. We can all do better than this. And I know that the counselors that are not on this ordinance.
Ms. Sullivan, I'm sorry, but I have to ask you to finish your mark. Thank you.
Good evening, counselors. Mark Lindy, 56 Michael Road. I'd like to bring a few points up tonight, and I'll try to keep it to three minutes. I believe the order is very biased in that only, it only mentions potential revenues and leaves out anything about the potential public health and safety issues. It therefore should be rewritten to provide as much information as possible to the voters if it is put on the ballot. In other words, it would be unbiased and transparent with respect to the subject matter. The issue is not a priority for our town. Not one counselor has offered up any statements that suggest constituents' voters are pushing for this. This is supported by the fact that very few citizens ever speak publicly in favor of it. The question then is why? Isn't it a counselor's job to represent constituents? It would be one thing if people were banging down doors to get something passed, but this is not the case. It is only being discussed because several counselors have an agenda and are pushing it. Most voters are not aware of the dangers that the sale of recreational marijuana is having across the country. They simply don't have the time, desire, or energy to educate themselves. In fact, most people consider marijuana and alcohol to be the same, which is, which we know is not the case. Is the council willing to jeopardize the future health and well-being of our town for tax revenues that we really don't need? Lastly, as someone who moved here deliberately from the town of Brockton, I see the effect that it's had in Brockton on all the borders of Brockton. You drive into Brockton, and that is all you deal with. You smell it, you see it, and you have impaired drivers. I didn't move here to have it happen to Bridgewater. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindy. Mr. Baumgarten?
Good evening, counselors. Notice I'm standing close to the mic. That's what you have to do. Sam Baumgarten, 60 Short Street. There are four items on your agenda that I want to comment on, but let me begin by thanking you for your time and efforts that you put into serving on the council. I appreciate your taking on this responsibility. I also want to share the reflection that despite differences of opinion that may be expressed at council meetings, I believe that all the folks who come here are advocating for what they think is the best in Bridgewater and to make Bridgewater the most welcoming, inclusive, and healthy town as possible. And I certainly hope that's the case. So first, for the aesthetic and environmental health of the town and our physical and mental health, I support the formation of the Tree Commission. Whatever we can do to maintain as much greenery as possible is all to the good. I'm reminded of the practice of forest bathing, started in Japan in 1982. Don't know if you've ever heard about that. Forest bathing is a practice of immersing yourself in nature in mindful way, using your senses to derive a whole range of benefits from, for physical, mental, emotional, and social health. You should look it up, forest bathing. Second, in terms of health, I am, like the previous speakers, opposed to any new vote to establish retail marijuana sales in Bridgewater. We already have a ban in place. There's no reason to lift it. It will be a waste of time and the town's money to vote again. Just because other municipalities, and in fact, many areas of the country, have made marijuana readily available, does not mean that we should. I believe we should stand out as an example of a town or city that places the social, emotional, and physical health of its citizens, especially its young citizens, as the highest priority, thus taking a stand against a mind-altering drug, rather than succumbing to the lure of any tax income or that everybody else is doing it argument. Let's be a role model for good health, something I have fought for my entire professional life as a physical educator. And let's stop bringing this up over and over. Further, as an aside, for those of you who've been around for a while, you may recall my efforts to establish a non-smoking law back in 2001. So I support anything, anything that supports smoking is an anathema to me. Third, in terms of being a welcoming and inclusive town, you have already made great strides for our town by supporting the flying of the Pride and Juneteenth flags and joining the state in declaring Juneteenth a holiday. Now you have a chance to take another step by joining cities and towns and supporting the establishment of Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday of October. Such a step may spur our citizenry to learn more about the persecution of Indigenous peoples and move us toward a clearer view of their important and valuable place in history, especially right here in Bridgewater. Fourth, and finally, I welcome and support the ordinance formulated by the town manager and assistant town manager, which outlines the formation of the DEI Committee. Such a committee will take us beyond the flag raisings and will allow us to dig deeper into town policies and procedures to make sure we are being equitable and inclusive in all our practices and are promoting diversity in town government. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Baumgarten. Mr. Jamian?
Good evening. I'll be quick. 221 Ray Jamian, 221 Aldridge Road. The last item on your agenda is the Tree Commission, which Mr. Baumgartner just referred to. I just want to make you aware that a number of people put a lot of time into putting this proposal together. And I just wanted to acknowledge them right now. Nicole Holmes is on the Hope and Space Committee. Sherry Kozinski on the Bridgewater Improvement Association. Bill Malpe, your tree warden, by the way, is unpaid. Paul DeCosta, your highway superintendent. And Mizzou Intenaro, your public works head. We put a lot of time into putting this together, and we presented it to town manager. And he wisely made one change, which was important. And we have now presented it to you. We hope you will look at it carefully, do your first reading, put it into a subcommittee. And at any time during the process, you have questions regarding our proposal, by all means, we're open to talking to you. We hope we can move this along quickly. In our eyes, it's a no-brainer. It will help the town. It will beautify the town. And it will just make the, will make us more of a welcoming community in terms of our environment. So I encourage you to look at the proposal, do your, do what you have to do, and add it to administrative code. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jamian. Other citizens for a citizen comment?
My name is Dr. Joyce Rain Anderson, and I am requesting permission to speak. I'm from Brockton, formerly North Bridgewater. And I would greatly appreciate your permission to speak tonight.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we allow.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any? Seeing none, yes, please proceed. I'm sorry. If we could have a voice vote, in favor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Two opposed, I see. Thank you. Please proceed.
Good evening, honorable members of the Town Council, and thank you for having me speak this evening. On June 3rd, 1856, former Governor Emory Washburne spoke to Bridgewater's 200th anniversary, acknowledging Sacum's Rock where Massasoit signed their prerequisite deed to the lands for 1649. Washburne went on to say, "But it is sad thing that all the race who peopled this area, none but tradition remains now. It is sad to recall how in a short time, not a drop of blood of the Sacum of Poconocet, whose hand of friendship welcomed our fathers to these shores, was found to be in the veins of any living being." Despite Washburne's sad and pitying remembering, it was not true, nor is it now, that Native peoples could not be found in the region. In fact, in the 1850s was a census known as the Earl Report, which counted enlisted all Indian communities and families in Massachusetts. And despite repeated attempts for erasure over 400 years, Native peoples are here to tell you, we still live here. Notions of the vanishing Indians stem from European explorers who took their direction from the Papal Bulls, known as the doctrine of discovery. These Papal Bulls were immediately issued following Columbus's journey east and when he got lost and landed on the islands in the Caribbean. In his quest for riches, Columbus and his crews enslaved and mutilated and even murdered Indigenous populations he encountered. Thus began what David Trent of the Onondaga Nation calls "the long assault on Indigenous peoples of these lands." This encounters brought legacy, legacy of genocide. Currently, many Indigenous nations are entering into what is called truth and reconciliation or truth and healing to uncover the truth in histories and to consider how we move forward in respectful and equal relationships with one another. Before you tonight is a resolution to rename the second Monday in October to Indigenous Peoples' Day for all the reasons stated therein. The resolution responds to the remarks made by the former Governor Washburne and acknowledges the continuous presence of Native peoples here. The Bridgewater Communities for Civil Rights has composed a thoughtful and important document, and their commitment to support Indigenous peoples, bring awareness to these issues, is commendable. Together, we can heal the deep wounds of the past and to recognize the dignity that we all deserve and move forward in good relationships. I urge you, honorable members, to support this resolution. Catapitamino.
Thank you very much. Are there other citizens? Yes, Ms. Neary.
Good evening. Pat Neary, Lakeside Drive. I'm happy to see a few more than the usual suspects here. I'll make this very brief. It could, because I know you've heard it all before, especially from me. Unless we are on the verge of bankruptcy, there is no valid reason to allow any pot shops in our town. Please do not approve putting this question on a ballot. We do not need to make any form of drugs more accessible. We have to protect our youth and our town. And I want to remind you, today's THC is not your grandpa's THC. It's up to like 90% now. So just keep that in mind. Please don't allow this question to go to ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neary. Other citizens? Mrs. Hanson?
Good evening. Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. I know everybody's aware how I feel about this, but I just want to remind, and hopefully everybody read my, you know, three-page essay. This question is not written clearly, and it's deceiving. And it's, we have a ban, as it's been already mentioned. We have a ban already in this town. This rule about Massachusetts allowing medical facilities to become retail if they so choose is only if you don't have a ban. We have a solid ban, as it was mentioned. So there's no need to put this up. Putting this before the voters, the average voter's not going to understand what this truly means. And the fact that it's allow, asking us to allow it is lifting a ban. No matter how you look at it, if you allow them to become retail, that's still lifting the ban. I had communication with counselors, and one of them, Mr. Wood, responded to me, sec, I'm quoting, reading. Secondly, as constructed, the measure does not lift the ban on retail marijuana. It models what is in the state as allowable exception. But we have a ban, so we can't, you know, it's not allowable. If we didn't have a ban, yeah. Both shops were engaged in marijuana prior to July 1st. Yep, no one's doubting that. The key date, the measure is an exception in the general ban. It does not lift it. There should be no concerns about random shops in the center of town or anywhere else. How can you say it's not lifting the ban if you're allowing something to come in as a retail? It doesn't matter if it's medical. It doesn't matter if you have one or 100. It's still lifting the ban. It's still allowing something that is banned. So semantics, it's, it's still, it's still giving an exception, but it's still taken away from the ban. You now have it. How can that still be allowing the ban? Doesn't make sense. And the average voter's not going to understand this. So it needs to be clearer if it ever got to ballot, which I don't think it should, because we can't allow it. We have a ban. This doesn't, this is not a fair question in the way it's written. And to, it's getting old to have the tax dollars is the only argument I've ever heard as to why we should have this. We don't need to be like every other town, no hardship with anybody. And this town does not need to survive by the tax dollars that we supposedly will get. I still am asking if somebody, because I don't know how to research it, but I want it to be shown, all these towns that have pot shops in their town, are they now in the black? Are they now having, you know, all their roads fixed? All their schools, you know, no budget concerns? You know, where, how, where are they? Are they reaping in the dough? I don't think so, because I think we would have heard about it. But on that, I don't think we should send a message to our kids that we're going to tax these places, have these places, so you can have a good school. We tell them not to use pot. We tell them not to use drugs. We tell them not to use alcohol, don't use cigarettes. But we fund, use that to fund their school. That is hypocritical. That is like, that is ridiculous. And yes, we have alcohol, we have cigarettes. How about learning from our mistakes on that? Why do we have to add pot to the equation? We don't have to be like every other town. Let's be known as a town that stood their ground and values and said, no, we don't need to be like everybody else. If people, and we're not naive, we know people use it. They have it, but we don't have to contribute to it. And it's just, it's upsetting that this keeps coming up over and over again. And I don't hear, you know, see that a lot of people are shouting, let's have it. I hear more people say, let's not have it. And we don't need it to survive. These taxes will not save this town, and I'm tired of hearing that argument. I think it's more of a cost, not just financially, but there's more cost and so many other reasons. We're not saying that these shops have a lot of derelicts around, and it's, you know, these things, we know they don't sell the 20, beyond 20, younger than 21. But a 21 knows an 18-year-old. An 18-year-old knows a 16-year-old. And it has shown that younger kids are getting it more and more because it's easier to get. You have college students that are 18 to 21. You can't tell me that a 21 isn't giving it to an 18. That doesn't mean that the shops are selling it. We're not saying that. We're just saying that we don't need it in this town. I think the Town Council needs to focus on a lot more things than keep bringing this up. And I don't think it should be brought to ballot the way it's written.
Excuse me, Mrs. Hanson, if I could ask you to conclude your remark?
Yeah. So I just don't think it should be brought to the ballot the way it's written. In fact, not at all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanson. Are there other citizens who care to step forward?
Gentlemen, Debbie Smith, Boxer Lane. I ask you all to please keep the ban on recreational marijuana in Bridgewater. This issue keeps being brought up now for over five years. Five years. It is time to move on. I think that a handful of people are controlling what's going on in Bridgewater. This might be the right time to change the government, the former government in Bridgewater. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Other citizens who care to step forward? Going once, going twice. Dr. Hunt?
Thank you, Carlton Hunt, Austin Street. I'm standing here, you've got a lot of business, absolutely behind the tree board. I chair the Energy Committee. That's one of the things we need to do to ensure that we remove carbon from the atmosphere and the earth and sequester it. I'm absolutely in favor of the speech about the Indigenous people. I have grandsons that trace their heritage back, and it's really long overdue that we recognize the things we did not correctly do back then. That was what it was. My ancestors actually perpetuated that. In terms of the DE Committee, it's long overdue. I hope you've put that through. And my last piece is regarding the discussion that most of people have done here. I would like the attorney of the town to actually talk about the legal issues that are involved with this so that the town understands clearly what the legal opinions are, not hearsay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt. Any other citizens for citizen open forum? Once, twice, three times, I see none. I thank you all very much for your comments. Moving on to appointments. We have one appointment to consider this evening. It's the proposed appointment of Tina Larson to the Cultural Committee for the term from 2022 through 2025.
Motion to appoint? Second?
And a second, thank you. Is there discussion? Seeing none, I would ask for a voice vote, please. All those in favor, kindly say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, thank you very much. We have no hearings per se. We have several license transactions this evening, the first of which is petition P. 2023-006, Change of Manager of an Alcohol Establishment, Cumberland Farms, number 2318. Is there anyone here on behalf of the petitioner? I will open a public hearing on this matter. Are there any general questions from the public concerning this proposed transfer of a liquor license? Questions from the public at all? None? Is there anyone from the public here to speak in favor of that transaction? Anyone here to speak in favor?
Mr. President, it's not a hearing.
We are following the format for here.
It's not, I didn't think it was a hearing. Oh, I didn't know. On my agenda, it doesn't say hearings. It doesn't have anything under the hearings.
I would defer to. I can, since his mic is off, it's, it's, it's fine to follow the protocols, general protocols in the hearing. But Counselor Gallagher is correct. There's no hearing required for the change in manager in alcohol establishment, but, but fine to follow that general protocol. I'm happy to comply with that. I would entertain a motion.
All moved.
Second.
Motion for approval and a second. Is there any discussion? Yeah, start the party.
Just a quick question. Which, which Commonwealth Farms is this in town? I see a store number, I'm just not sure.
Down by 24.
Okay. The one in 24?
Yeah. The one in center of town, I don't think sells.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. That's all I want.
Thank you, Counselor. We have a motion and a second. And I would ask, please, for a, for a voice vote in favor.
I actually think it says roll call vote, Mr. President.
I'm sorry?
It says roll call vote.
And we'll have, we'll have a. A roll call vote, please.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
I thank you. Moving on to petition 2023-007, granting of the transfer of a common vitler license, sixteen Central Square. This is a license to Team WB Inc., DBA Fiesta Mexican Securita. And I would ask for a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I would ask please for a roll call vote.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
And Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. And we have finally a petition P 2023-008, granting of a transfer of a common vitler license, fifty-nine Broad Street. This is to WBM Factory Elementary, Inc., doing business as Food Truck. I would ask for a, a motion of approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, Counselor.
Um, I guess my only question is, what is the name?
The name, as we have it, is the corporate name, WBM Factory Elementary, Inc., which is a Massachusetts corporation.
Right.
We have a business certificate on file with the town clerk, I've confirmed today, under the name Food Truck.
So that'll be on the building, Food Truck? I don't know, I'm just asking.
That is the name on their business certificate. That would best be the name on their food truck.
Okay. Just want to know what the DBA is.
You're entitled to know that.
Food building, food truck.
We have, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No, seeing none. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus? And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
I thank you very much. Moving on to presentations, we have one, it is the master plan presentation. And I understand that Jennifer DeVois-Brand is here with us, and I ask you to kindly introduce us to the plan.
One second to just get organized. Good evening, President Chase and Council. Thank you so much for having me this evening. I wanted to come by this evening and just give you a brief presentation on the town of Bridgewater's new comprehensive master plan that was adopted this past May by the planning board. This has been a long work in progress. We've been working on this since 2018. Another project that's been ongoing since I started working for the town of Bridgewater. So finally, all these things are coming to fruition. It's, it's been pretty gratifying this year to have all these things come to close. So I just wanted, I think you had in your packet a little presentation, so I just wanted to go through those slides really quickly. Next slide, Michael. So in 2018, the town hired Barrett Planning Group and McMahon Associates as our two consultants to work on the master plan for us. This was to help us update our master plan, which had not been updated in several years. Dr. Hunt can help me with that. Thank you. Two thousand and two and two thousand and fourteen were the last years. And then after we did that, the town manager established an ad hoc community, comprehensive master planning committee. And those members were Dr. Perry and Mr. Souza from the council, Ken Bernard, Bill Callahan, Matt Garrettson, Nicole Holmes, Dr. Hunt, Sue McComb, Stephen Rogan, Susie Robinson, and Mary Waldron. So we had a very robust committee. It was a broad group of different people with different interests and different expertise. I served as staff support to that committee as well, so I attended all of their meetings as well. So that group started meeting in December and then continued meeting over the next couple of years on pretty much a monthly basis. We also held three public forums. Those were held in March of 2019, June of 2019, and December of 2020. They were held at the senior center, and we did exercises with all of the public that showed up, and we asked them what their thoughts were about different parts of the community and different, you know, things on zoning and transportation and housing and all of the different topics. So we got some good information there. We also utilized CoUrbanize, which is an online community engagement platform that's designed specifically for municipal planning. We utilize that for online feedback. We started with that in March of 2019, I believe it was, through the end of that year, and we had about a thousand visitors through that site over that time period, which was super helpful, and we had about three hundred to four hundred comments on, on the site at that time. We also did one online survey in 2020, and we had over two hundred responses to our online survey. So we had a pretty robust community engagement piece onto the master plan. We also did what we were calling, call them, excuse me, we call them core assessment meetings. So we took each topic and we had specific meetings based on those topics, and we invited specific people in town that had expertise on those areas, and we had individual one-on-one sessions with those to get their feedback on those. And those were held throughout 2019 as well. So we had a pretty robust, like I said, community engagement piece. And then we met with the consultants, met with the planning board twice, once in December of 2021, and then again in March of 2020. And then after several revisions, the planning board again finally adopted this version that is final and available on our website in May of 2022. Next slide. What is the master plan, I think is the next slide, if I can get my page here. How is it defined and what is it? So a master plan is a process for deciding what we do, how we do it, when we do it, where we do it, basically. How we zone our land, where we put our transportation, where we put our housing, all of those things, where we put our open space. It's a comprehensive analysis of all aspects of community development in our community, and it works to improve the welfare of the people and our community. It creates communities that offer better choices for our people and where they live in their community and how they live in their community. It's a long range plan, and it usually runs five to ten years. I believe when we did ours, we did it out for the ten years so that we should be looking to update this again in 2032. So we should be thinking about that. When we're looking to implement this plan, we should be looking towards the next ten-year cycle. Next slide. A master plan will help manage a community's growth and manage its change. It provides for orderly and predictable developments because you identify the areas of town where you want the growth and development. It helps you protect, protect specific environmental resources. It sets priorities for development and maintaining your infrastructure and your public facilities. It will strengthen your identity and create a framework for future policy decisions. It also provides clear guidance to landowners, developers, and permitting authorities. So that's what's helpful specifically for my department, because now that we have a master plan, we can say to developers who are coming in and asking for specific zoning changes, or where would we like to see certain types of development, we can point to the master plan and say, we just went through this exercise, let's open the book and look and see where, where we want to see these things. Next slide. So Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one D is the state statute that dictates what should be in a master plan. And those are a statement of goals and policies, and the way we did it is that we broke out our goals and policies into each topic chapter. So we have about two goals for each chapter. And those chapters are land use, housing, economic development, natural and cultural resources, open space and recreation, services and facilities, transportation and circulation, and then there's an implementation chapter. Next slide. And then what is in a comprehensive plan? How did we get to where we are? So we created a vision statement. That's the first page of our master plan, the community vision statement. We did a lot of data analysis, data collection, using the census and other plans that have already been completed and a lot of research. There's an existing condition section, and then trends, estimates, and future projections. And then again, the goals, policies, and actions, and then there's a lot of maps in here. So we had, the consultant had somebody specifically working with GIS and doing maps for us. Next slide. So next steps. So chapter eight in the master plan is the implementation chapter. And implementation lays out recommendations for each element or topic, and it identifies near-term, midterm, and long-term, and ongoing recommendations and for, to achieve the goals and strategies that we've identified. You can use this, this plan to identify your annual goals for your upcoming year. You can also use the plan to, you know, make amendments to your zoning that you think need to be adjusted, or when you're approaching develop, or landowners for potential open space purchases and things like that. It is important that we understand that the master plan is a living, working document. We don't want this book to go sit on a shelf somewhere. We want to keep this in our minds. We want to always be using this when we're talking about development, planning, and community development in the town. So with that, I don't have anything else really to say about it other than I'm, I'm very thankful for all the council's support, for Dr. Perry and Mr. Souza that were on the committee. The CEDC, I know, took some role, some part in this. The planning board was very supportive in this as well, and I want to thank everybody for all their hard work on this effort. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Well, thank you. Are there questions from the council for the director? Yes, Counselor Moore?
Yeah, first, thank you. Great presentation. I think this is an incredibly valuable document. And I want to just echo the comments, thanking everyone who participated in creating it. From what I can tell, you know, we've had a document like this in the past, and pieces of that document were implemented, but not everything. So it seems like the hardest part with a document like this is taking it from the vision to an affordable and actionable sort of strategy. So do you, do you have a recommendation on how we go from the document maybe to an early set of actions?
So I think, you know, we've discussed that a little briefly, and I think one of the good places to start is the strategic planning committee. Maybe if we get them involved, you know, I'm happy to work with them and go through, you know, what are some of the near-term goals in the, in the implementation plan and pulling those out and see what are some of the, as we would call it, low-hanging fruit that we can do quickly, and then maybe make some plans for some of the longer-term things, or some of the things we might need some more resources for. You know, I want to, you know, commend Dr. Hunt for some of the work that he did in those previous plans, because none of it would have gotten implemented without his work. You know, he was very instrumental in that work, so I want to just note that. But, you know, going forward, you know, we're going to need everybody's help, and it's going to be, you know, a bigger undertaking. And so I just think any resources that we can bring on board, I think would be great.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there further questions? Yes, Counselor Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few questions and comments. And again, I appreciate the work that the whole committee has done over these past several years. And I do remember going down to the senior center on a Saturday morning. It seems like a long time ago. Was it at least three years ago?
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, yeah. So here we are. Okay. And we've had other studies that have been in the works and have been done since then, the traffic study, the downtown redevelopment. And we also have a, had one about shopping habits and what's missed in Bridgewater and so forth. So the master plan, hopefully we'll put that all together. And I haven't, I've combed through the document online briefly. It's a lot, it's a lengthy document. I know we're only getting bullet points here. But it is a very lengthy document. I'm looking forward to working with Counselor Moore and Counselor Perry on the strategic planning committee to go through this, come back with some recommendations as to what we can do. My question to you is the stakeholders, particularly our downtown businesses.
Sure.
I think that they would need to be brought into the process, particularly things that are going to affect the downtown area. When did, were they reached, was there a way to reach out to them during this process, or is now the time to say, hey, what, what? Like if we were to redevelop the common, you know, how would that affect some of the downtown businesses? What has their input been, or is now the time to try to get their input for anything that we recommend?
Sure. So if I recall, and again, it's been a couple of years, but we did reach out to some specific businesses that we had some contacts with, and we did have them participate in some of those core assessment meetings. I do know a couple of business owners, I think, did come some, to some of those public forums. So there was some, maybe very limited input from them. I think definitely now is the time to get them involved when we start talking about the goals and strategies specifically around the common and the downtown. You know, I recently joined a meeting with Mr. Dutton and the president of the BBA, I believe he is now, and you know, we talked about, you know, having regular meetings with them and getting them more involved in things. So I'm certainly happy to, you know, keep them involved and meeting with them on a regular basis and getting those business owners involved.
And one of the positive things that I do see at this time with this being completed is usually, and you were right, I mean, sometimes these reports get done, they get put on the shelf, and they get put on the shelf usually because there's a downturn in the economy. And we just don't have any money or any resources to implement any of that. We're looking to survive and keep what we currently have. But Bridgewater right now is in very good financial shape. There, we do have some good reserves. I'm not saying we need to spend all of that on these ideas, but I do think that this is the time to do it. We have done a lot of positive things outside the master plan by approving the elementary school, approving a new fire station, and making some headway with our, our trail system in Bridgewater. And hopefully we'll continue to, to make headway there. You know, we do need to do something with our downtown. And again, when you, private and public mesh together, sometimes, you know, it works and sometimes it doesn't. Downtown really needs a lot of work. Affordable housing is certainly an issue in this town and the state. We need to address that. But I'm looking forward to whatever, whatever I can offer as one person to help bring some good ideas back based on this report. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Wood?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you to you and the whole group to put this together. I know how hard it is, and I've read older plans, and it takes a while to cycle through each section and whatnot. The chapter you cited in Mass General Law is applicable to any town and city in Massachusetts, especially those that still open, operate under open town meetings. So the planning board seems like the natural place to put the master plan. But one of the issues I've seen over the years is that the master plan, even though we may have had members participating, it's not tightly coupled to the legislative actions that the town council needs, you know, execute. So for example, we just went through a major overhaul of the zoning laws. I don't know if those fit with what was described in the master plan. We're doing some work in Styles and Heart. Hopefully we get some more money for work there. I don't know if that fits in with the open space portion of the master plan. Paving and, and circulation around the common, I don't know if that fits in with the master plan. So, so the approving body is the, is the, is the planning board. And yet, most of the additional work has to happen here. So will we see out of your office, CEDC office, recommendations for specific things that we can do, as, as Counselor Gallagher said, that we can do to take on pieces of the master plan and run them through the capital plan that'll come from the town manager and other resources to start implementing some of those ideas?
Yes, I think absolutely. And I think one of the, the reasons that, you know, I'm, I can, you know, be conduit, I guess, for lack of a better word, with the council, the strategic planning committee, is that, you know, I also work with the planning board and, you know, the, the town planner, and I can sort of align both of those two ideas and those two work products together. And just to go back to what you were saying about the zoning recodification and Styles and Heart, all of those items were underway in, in process when this, the master plan was being done. So those were considered and should be, a lot of that should be recognized in here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. For, yes, Counselor Perry?
Thank you. I just also want to comment to let Mr. Gallagher know, is we do have actually the ad hoc downtown committee meeting this Thursday, so we're going to be starting to do some work in that area. And again, I was definitely part of the committee putting this together. So I would just recommend either all the councils individually just becoming very familiar with the document on their own terms, or maybe we come together in a group format and maybe have a review with Jennifer of something along those lines, just to make sure we're all on the same page. But either way, I think it's just something that I think the entire council should make sure they get a good handle on, on this document. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Counselor. Further counsel comment?
I would just like to add, if I may, that I had attended a number of the sessions at the senior center. I, I felt very strongly that the, the leadership and the coordination, the expertise that the, the Barrett Group provided was invaluable. I was very happy to see the degree of citizen input that was provided and took place there. Yes, it was now quite a long time ago, but we know that these things can take considerable time. And certainly the effort, Jennifer, of your department is duly noted, and we, we thank you very much for all of that work.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Moving on to the town managers' report, I would like to turn this over to Mr. Dutton, and the first item on our agenda for you, Mr. Dutton, is the roadway prior prioritization process.
So thank you, Mr. President. I thought it would be useful, knowing that there are a lot of folks in town that think that we sort of prioritize our road repair and road rebuilding list with a flip of a coin. I thought it'd be important, important to really let you know what we go through as, as part of a process. So before I do that, let me just sort of give you how we define each local road, so, or each road in town. So a local road is defined as a road that serves the abutting land uses. So for example, a road in a subdivision would be considered a local road. A sub-collector road is defined as a road that serves not only the abutting land uses, but also conveys traffic from one local road to a collector or arterial but also conveys traffic from one local road to a collector or arterial road. Good example of this would be maybe Crescent Street, which runs from South Street, uh, over to Pleasant. And serves to convey traffic from, you know, Crescent Drive, Fremont Street, um, to either, either South or Pleasant. So that, that would be a sub collector road. A collector road, uh, little, we're going up the chain of command here. Collector road serves to convey traffic from local and sub collector roads to arterial roads. So an example of this would be High Street, uh, South Street, Vernon, um, so forth. And then an arterial road, um, is a road that serves to convey traffic from all of the other roads, to major roadways and highways. So example of this, uh, would be what we referred to mostly as our numbered roads. So eighteen, uh, twenty-eight and so forth, uh, or Bedford Street, Main Street, Pleasant Street. So that gives you just a sense of how we look and classify, uh, roads as we're going through, uh, an analysis process. So we had, uh, we had done, uh, back in probably about twenty-ten or eleven, had done, uh, engaged Weston and Sampson, an engineering firm, to do, um, a road analysis. At that point, uh, the technology didn't exist, so, so people, um, actually drove around, got out of their trucks or cars and took measurements of cracks and so forth in the streets. Um, and they gave us, uh, a road, uh, repair, uh, guide based on the surface conditions of the road. So in twenty-eighteen, uh, the technology did exist. We, we hired, uh, Street Logix, uh, which was a firm, uh, that developed a product called Street Scan. And Street Scan was, uh, a high-tech assessment of every town road and sidewalk, uh, that we had in our, in our ownership. And then translated that, uh, into sort of, uh, into a priority, um, or not a priority, I shouldn't say. It, it translated that into, um, a system that identified, you know, good roads and poor roads and then what was in between. So it was a color-coded ranking system, so to speak. That became essentially our base documentation, uh, for the years, any particular year's road improvement program. And I say base documentation because there's more that goes into that. And so one of the things that Street Scan does not do, um, is look at subsurface. So it can, it can judge the, the condition of the road, uh, surface. It can judge the condition of the sidewalk surface, but it does not, uh, not able yet. Technology, I'm sure, will come, but does not yet look at, uh, other things that we have to take into account for maintenance or capital, uh, projects such as drainage, excuse me, drainage infrastructure, aging, uh, water pipes, um, asbestos water mains that need to be replaced, sewer main conditions and so forth. So the biggest one of those is drainage for us right now. In any case, uh, the DPW staff evaluation, uh, group, which is primarily the DPW director, the highway superintendent and the town engineer, uh, use the Street Scan report, uh, in conjunction with other factors, uh, including the classification category, uh, drainage and stormwater system conditions, water main replacement needs, sewer main replacement needs, and then current pavement conditions, uh, to rank and select which roadways would be selected for, for, uh, maintenance level treatment in any given year. So they look at, uh, the roads, they decide what's appropriate for what we call mill and pave, uh, work and which ones, uh, would require full depth reclamation. Mill and pave is easiest. You see, uh, you saw that on, um, on, um, Center Street, uh, where the machine comes in, they grind off the top inch or, or so of, of, um, pavement. And then they put down, uh, an inch or so of top, uh, top coat. So that's, that's the cheapest, um, what we do now, that's, that's the cheapest, maintenance work, uh, that we do in terms of full, full, uh, shoulder to shoulder, uh, maintenance. The most expensive is, uh, road replacement, which is what we're looking to do on Flag Street. Likely portions of South Street, Vernon Street, um, and, and Main Street. Also somewhere in the middle is full depth reclamation, which means that the entire asphalt base comes up. Any improvements are made to the subsurface, um, and then it's re, rebuilt from the, from the, uh, base, uh, upwards. So they look at all of those, uh, different factors. They also, uh, operate within budget constraints. So roadways that require, uh, minimal, uh, drainage, uh, work will be a mill and pave. And then, uh, roadways that, uh, fall under, uh, sub collector or collector roads, for example, would be prioritized over the simple local roads. So, so the amount of use, uh, essentially dictates, uh, sometimes dictates, uh, where, where we're going to focus our efforts. So we get approximately seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars in Chapter ninety funding, uh, from the state. And that is used for maintenance of roads. And that is maintenance that does not involve major drainage work, uh, or water and sewer main replacement, uh, work. Anything that does not involve those, we would be utilizing Chapter ninety, uh, funds. And roadways, uh, that can be, obviously grouped together because of their location, um, are sometimes, done jointly because there's an optimum return, uh, on that maintenance, uh, investment. Roads that require major capital investment, uh, which we've sort of tentatively identified as a million dollars for reconstruction, drainage upgrades, water and sewer main replacements, so forth, are funded through our capital planning process. And over, uh, looking five years out, are placed on the capital, uh, plan, uh, for, for major reconstruction. We also look for grant funding. Uh, there are several grants, uh, not many, but there are several grants that, that do, uh, fund road replacements only where, uh, we meet the criteria. So for example, um, the local road, virtually no grant, uh, funds local road reconstruction. But for example, our TIP, uh, program, Transportation Improvement Program, uh, that's a regional, uh, state program, regularly funds, uh, arterials and, and higher. So we look to, um, we will, uh, certainly will be looking to that, um, for a number of our major road replacements. So that, I think that just gives you a very, very basic idea of how we sort of begin to prioritize roads. It's, it's, um, somewhere between an art and a science. Obviously, we take as much data as we can from Street Scan. We take as much, uh, hard data as we can from, uh, our knowledge of, of the piping, both sewer and water and drainage, uh, underneath the pavement, um, and then translate that into prioritized, uh, a prioritized list. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we look to see, you know, what that particular road is. If it's a, uh, local road right on through to, uh, a more major, uh, arterial, I think is what, the, the highest level that we have in Bridgewater, short of the state highways. But I'm happy to answer any questions about that, if anybody has a question.
Well, thank you. If there are questions for the town manager, yes, uh, Counselor Moore. Thank you, Counselor. Uh, for the, yes, Counselor Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President, to you and the town manager. A couple of questions. Number one, was, is there any more, um, money available through the state when we're dealing with the, the major artery roads? The eighteen's, the twenty-eights and things like that because of the, the use? Did you mention that? I know you mentioned TIP, but I just don't know if there was any more state funds available beyond what we get for the, you know, Chapter ninety monies and stuff like that.
Uh, the two, two major, uh, state programs are Chapter ninety, which is a formula, uh, essentially a formula grant we get every year. Despite some of the political, um, you know, cheering, we, we, our, our Chapter ninety funding is actually just a little bit less than we got ten years ago. So we, we don't, um, we don't get a, a windfall there, uh, for the most part. And then, uh, and then the Transportation Improvement Program is, is a regional, uh, program. It, uh, it is competitive. Um, once you put an item on the tip, uh, depending on how far advanced you are, how, how far along in the planning process you are with that, uh, that can take up to five years, uh, to come to fruition. So it's a, it's a long process. Um, and to Counselor Moore's point, um, you know, we want to make sure, Bridgewater historically has done a terrible job of getting program, uh, getting projects on the tip. We want to make sure we have a project, multiple projects working their way through the tip list, uh, in any given year. So it's, um, and they fund, you know, bridges, depending on what roadway you're looking at. They'll fund, you know, bridge replacements, uh, road replacements like we're looking at on, on Flag Street or, or, or Cross or Vernon. So that's, that's really, uh, Cross is not eligible for TIP, so I, I do want to point that out. But it's, it is important for us to make sure we've got programs coming through the tip process.
And the second question to base on that was, uh, Flag Street situations. Obviously, we, we've seen pictures of the, the collapse and stuff underneath. What is the current status of that repair and funding for that repair?
Uh, I can tell you, uh, we're working, uh, really hard and really quick to try to find, uh, alternative funding to replace that. The, the estimate, uh, for the total work, uh, on Flag, I think approaches, um, seven million dollars, somewhere in that price range. So we are looking to, uh, secure some grant funding through a different state program, even though I said the two main ones are TIP and, uh, and then Chapter ninety, but we're looking at a separate program. Fortunately, Flag Street has, um, two or three culverts, um, uh, that run along, uh, or run underneath the street. So that actually, uh, triggers a different program that, that we are hoping to avail ourselves of funds for. I can tell you that we do a, a very detailed job of identifying how, you know, once we get a, an estimate of the total replacement, um, we do a very, uh, very detailed analysis of what, uh, what of that total amount is going to be funded through water, uh, the water, uh, uh, reserves. What's going to be funded through sewer reserves because we can use those, um, to fund some of those improvements. And then, um, and then the, obviously that, the biggest bulk of it is, is the actual road, which, uh, we either have to foot, uh, ask taxpayers to foot or, or find alternative funding for.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, if I may, uh, Mr. Dutton, just to follow on to that question concerning Flag Street. I have personally received, uh, questions and comments. As you know, at earlier point, uh, during the summer, uh, a section of the road near Conan Street had been, um, closed and traffic was detoured because of a, a failure in the road. I also recall that, uh, a year ago or longer, um, the council actually approved the, the drainage work on something like, I think about a thousand feet of, uh, uh, basically failed, uh, drainage, piping beneath Flag Street. I'm, I'm kind of curious if, uh, if this is simply an extension of that earlier, uh, drainage, uh, problem or, uh, some new issue that's arisen near the intersection of Conan Street.
Uh, I guess the short answer is it's an extension of the issue that's existed. We know that back in the nineteen eighties, um, a lot of corrugated metal pipe went in the ground because it was, at the time, was the newest and best thing and it was going to last forever. And surprise, surprise, fast forward, uh, this many years and it's not the newest and best thing and it disintegrates, given, given the right, uh, elements. So, um, so the council appropriated, I believe it was five hundred thousand dollars. That is covering, um, some emergency repair and it's, uh, covering about three hundred thousand dollars worth of engineering work that has to be done in order to get us to the point where we can actually do the work.
I see. All right. Uh, thank you. Uh, Counselor Wood.
Question that no one's going to like, but, um, on the, on the, on the tax calculator, on the page, on the, uh, website, there used to be a roadway, um, item for, uh, tax, uh, to do a, um, to do an override for basically a, a debt exclusion. Is that still a part of your mindset since we only get seven hundred thousand? It sounds like the number's less than ten years ago and we don't have other revenue sources behind that.
So I, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but it is, uh, on the radar. We want to make sure that we, uh, do whatever we can to get, uh, any kind of TIP funding first before we ask taxpayers to, um, to, uh, you know, increase their, their tax burden in order to pay for roads. So, so that is, uh, that is a question that we're looking at, uh, probably not for your potentially upcoming, election on the seventh, but possibly the next town election after that in April.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gallagher.
I hope, I thank him, sir. Through you, uh, I, I hope that does not come forward as a request. I don't think the taxpayers of the town are, can afford to have an, a debt exclusion when we do have money that could help fund these things. Now, my, you, we've talked a lot about TIPS and other things. The governor did release multiple millions of dollars extra for, for Chapter ninety after we received that seven hundred thousand dollars. I don't know how much of that we got. But there is, the legislature does this all the time. We, we, we get the cherry sheets that tell us how much our Chapter money, Chapter ninety money is going to be and it really doesn't show on that. It's a, it's a separate allocation, but there's always additional monies that the governor releases for Chapter, uh, Chapter ninety monies. And I know he did that this year and it was not vetoed. I'm just not sure what, what cut, how much of that we got and whether it was even enough to, you know, repave, uh, you know, a quarter mile or whatever. But I hope that we do look at all other resources and not go back to the taxpayers for this because we do have the money to do it. Not all of it at once, but like you say, a capital plan going forward for every, every year, I think we can do that. So I hope, I hope that's, that's the route we go and not go back to the taxpayer.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there further questions for the town manager on the subject of, uh? No, if seeing none, amazingly enough. I thank you. I would ask you, uh, Mr. Town, Mr. Dutton, if you would move to the, uh, subject of the testing of, um, drinking water.
So I know, um, I know some questions have come up about the safety of, of Bridgewater water. And I think there's a, there are a lot of misconceptions, um, about the safety of Bridgewater water. Bridgewater water quite simply is very safe to drink, um, period. But let me tell you just a little bit about what we do on a daily basis, what we do on a monthly basis to, um, make sure that the water is safe. So we have, um, in terms of daily testing, we test, uh, pH balance, chlorine, iron and manganese. Um, and we do those, uh, these testings in our own water lab, the daily, the daily testings we do in our own water lab. Chlorine, I think, as everybody knows, is a disinfectant, um, and we monitor that, uh, disinfectant to make sure it's high enough to kill any, uh, bacteria, but not high enough to cause other health or, or aesthetic issues. Um, on pH, uh, we keep our water at, at a seven, uh, which is neutral on the pH scale. DEP identifies the safe ranges, uh, between six point five and eight point five, um, pH balance. Uh, iron and manganese are both, uh, aesthetic issues. I've talked about this quite a bit. They are found naturally, uh, in groundwater, um, and they, uh, as you know, discolor the water. Couple, the two, two, both elements together discolor the water certainly, um, when they, when they reach, uh, oxygen, they turn, uh, turn a, a brownish color, which discolors your water. There is not a, uh, so anyway, we, we try, try to, uh, finish the water and treat the water and filter the water in our current one plant as much as possible to remove as much of that iron and manganese before it gets into the, the distribution system. I will point out that when the new plant comes online, uh, later in the spring, that, uh, that new plant will filter out, uh, the balance, the remaining forty percent, uh, of the, uh, of the water that we use. I think, I think, uh, this water superintendent pointed that out, uh, when he was here, uh, last meeting. Uh, iron and manganese is not, uh, a health concern according to the EPA, but obviously, uh, our, our, uh, chief water operator and, and the staff, uh, want to make sure that we're presenting something that's as aesthetically pleasing as possible. It's it's when when we do get iron and manganese in there, it's not good for washing clothes, obviously, and it's not. Aesthetically pleasing to drink either, so. So we do what we can right now to try to filter out as much of that as possible. In terms of professional lab testing, we test for bacteria, E. coli, PFAS. And a very long list of other contaminants that that we are required to test for by the DEP. It includes heavy metals of all sorts, other elements that that we don't have in Bridgewater water. So we test all our source water, which means the entry points, the wells. And the entry points into the system. And we also do about thirty water services around town, including school testing. PFAS PFAS samples are primarily taken from finished water. Because we want to know what levels of PFAS people are actually drinking. So instead of the source water, we want to know. What what people are actually drinking, coming out of their faucets or water fountains. But we also on occasion or regularly, I shouldn't say on occasion, we'll also regularly determine. Do some testing to determine if there are particular wells that are contributing more PFAS into the system than others. And that gives us mostly information for our own benefit. But but as I've explained before. When water, water comes out of the ground, out of our ten wells that we are currently using. There's no segregation, there's no strict segregation of that water in the system. So you may. You may be living close to a spot where certain water is being pumped into the system. And so you may get more of certain wells in that water, more of yeah, certain. Volume of water coming out of those wells than you would in a different place across town that's that's being. More heavily serviced by by a different source. So honestly, with the the exception of very slightly elevated PFAS levels, which occurs on a very intermittent basis for us. All our tests come back at acceptable levels right across the board. You can find our latest DEP reporting on the website, the test results of of that we do. For labs is on the website and you can certainly download that and look at that, it's a PDF document. So I I I'm hoping that clears up some, again, we do daily testing. You'll see the water department van around town taking samples from different places and that's what they're doing is is testing. So. But happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Counselor Moore?
Mr. President, through you to the town manager, thank you for the update, I appreciate it. You mentioned that we do test the school water supply and I know there's been some recent questions about. That water supply and the students that are filling their water bottles. Could you talk a little bit about the results that you've seen at the schools?
Same results right across the whole town, so so at the district, you know, where it comes out, the finished water is what they call it. Tests virtually the same in every building that's tested. So this building is tested on a regular basis, the high school, it's all. Basically the same, you know, obviously there might be very slight variations, but. To the extent that. You know, that there's. That the water comes out, it's coming out the same virtually all over town, so.
Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Susa.
Through you to the town manager, two weeks ago, you said that there's going to be some system down at the highway department if people wanted to get their bottled water. Especially those who have brown water. Is that system up and running yet?
That system has, I was down there today, actually, the system is installed, we are only waiting on DEP. Sign off before we can actually invite people down and use the system. So it is is in place and and ready to go, we're just waiting for a DEP to sign off on it.
Thank you, I hope they're listening tonight.
Further questions for the town manager? Seeing none, Mr. Dutton, if you could bring us up to date on the fire station.
Fire station, I don't have a whole lot to report, but I will put this on. Every meeting from now till the fire station gets built, so you'll get tired of seeing it. You'll notice that the Mitchell School is now off of your agenda. But but the fire station, we are finalizing the contract, the OPM contract with CHA. Who was the selected OPM and they have also done, as you may know, they've also. Done a great job with the Mitchell School and continue to do a great job with the real closeout of the construction process on the Mitchell. And the OPM has already met with the architect, they've gone over a number of different items, so they are actually plowing ahead and we're finalizing. The last details of the contract with them, so. So that is good news, that's what I have.
Very good, thank you, questions concerning the fire station project? Seeing none.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton, I appreciate.
I'm sorry. To the town manager?
Yes.
I keep forgetting, so I have to do it while it's on top of my head. For the next meeting, can you give us an update on the mobile station purchase, please?
I definitely can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on, we are moving to legislation, I'm sorry, we're moving to discussions, we have none scheduled for this evening. Committee reports, are there any committee reports that, yes, Counselor Wood?
Thank you. Regarding the. Order twelve, let the voters decide, the Community Economic Development Committee met tonight. To discuss and we are returning a. Approval of the recommendation for approval from the committee. And I'm wondering if it would be helpful in a short summary, if I go over the document that we discussed during the committee meeting.
You are entitled to do that, Counselor.
And I will keep it brief, I know everybody's doesn't want to stay here forever and I can talk on. This is now a public document, so anybody can request it from Deborah. If if you want your own copy. The committee was charged with. Understanding the revenue and cost estimates of retail shop here in Bridgewater. Retail, the revenue estimates are are pretty straightforward, the Cannabis Control Commission has a ton of data. Actually had a press release which helped tremendously. In twenty twenty one, there were one hundred ninety four retail shops. Those retail shops generated one point three billion dollars in sales. That translates to eight million nine hundred plus dollars per store per year. Apply a three percent local tax to that, which is where our revenue would come from. And that equals two hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars per store annually. So if we had two Bridgewater stores, that's a potential of over a half million dollar new revenue. And that's like having two brand new Home Depots land in Bridgewater. Then we turn to costs. This, this page here is actually taken from. And a letter that the town manager sent to Theory Wellness when they inquired about. Responses to their shop for anything marijuana related, it's a little dense, but. Excuse me, in general, what it says is. There are some calls for tripped burglar alarms. There was some false alarms, there was. Somebody that got locked in and there was another thing, but there was no dispensary related. Problems itself or related to marijuana, so. I also, as I said in the meeting, I reached out to Brockton. They basically reported the same thing for their dispensaries, no, no police problems whatsoever. The next page is is Wareham, a history of Wareham, Wareham is the oldest dispensary retail in in the Commonwealth. They opened in two thousand sixteen and so what's what's. Really interesting about this and it's and it's data that goes up to two thousand nineteen and there's older years, but from two thousand sixteen. Except for mergers and rapes, and I'm not sure you can connect those with marijuana, but. All the other categories of, you know, headed decline, so a decline in assaults, burglar, burglar, sorry, that burglar. Yes, I couldn't pronounce it in the other meeting either, theft, auto theft, arson, all dropped. When the presence of the retail store was there, I'm not saying there's a cause. I'm just saying what you hear about escalation of crime in neighborhoods where there are retail shops. Doesn't appear in this data and I'd be happy to hear from other people of factual data from other sources if there are. Additional costs, you know, the novelty of the shops over, we have already about a hundred and fifty retail shops with more pending licenses. There's no cost associated with converting an existing MMTC user over. And in fact, some low volume users are being penalized because they have to apply for an annual card and there's a cost to that. Cars, cost for cars, so while they're not paying the taxes. Their their extra cost is probably higher than taxes if they're a low volume user. We have no mitigation against black market sales and. Really, when you hear about passing it on to teenagers. I I won't tell you the source, but I have good sources, the black market price for marijuana is much lower than a retail store. So anybody that's passing it on is not standing outside the door, hey, mister, can you go and buy it? They're buying it someplace else. And then, of course, there's the home growers and there's no mitigation against home growers, so that covers most of the costs. So again, the conclusions. You know, there's no horror stories. Looking at the five year history of retail marijuana in Commonwealth. Hundred and fifty stores, you know, over a billion, three billion total sales, there's no horror stories, there may be. An increased rate of DUI, but it's not attributed to a specific retail store, it's attributed to the fact that there's more marijuana. And I couldn't find any measurement that also may say that DUIs related to alcohol drop at the same, at the same time. So it'd be good to see that data, but it's it's not found, I spent hours searching for it. So the conclusion is there are no measurable additional costs that are associated with conversion to medical to retail, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wood. I would like to offer a brief committee report from the. September twenty second meeting of the Rules and Procedures Committee took place last Thursday evening on the matter of the same proposed legislation. And our meeting was conducted with a quorum consisting of myself and Counselor Susa. There were two citizens in attendance remotely. And we had a very brief meeting, the total elapsed time of the meeting was twelve minutes. It's available on YouTube, you can easily find it, it's a pretty quick study. In effect, we had a vote. To consider recommendation of the marijuana proposal that was just described by Counselor Wood. Consider approval of that for recommendation to the full council. And the vote was one in favor, that was my vote. And there was one vote opposing return of the council, return of the measure to the council. So then that effect is there was really no recommendation from the Rules and Procedures Committee. Or proceeding with that measure. That said, what was much more concerning and frankly, much more time consuming during that brief twelve minute meetings. Were some comments that were received from some members of the public. Expressing concern over the perceived impropriety of the fact that. I, as one of the two proponents of that order. Would be sitting in the council, in the committee with the ability to vote on the disposition of it from the committee. That's exactly how our committees function. And first and foremost, let me say that I've received assurances from our town attorney who is here this evening. To the effect that he is aware of no unusual steps, no impropriety, no. Conflict, as I think was alleged. Represented by the fact that I was able to vote on the matter. Somehow, there seemed to be a public perception among some that. I should, I don't know, it wasn't spoken, but perhaps it was perceived that I should recuse myself in some form. That I should not participate in the vote because it was my measure, I'm I'm a co-sponsor of the. Of the legislation. When we as counselors sit on any committee on which we may serve the council. We have the full ability to promote and support legislation that we ourselves may have presented to the council. That's really just how it works, there's nothing unusual, nothing conflicting about that, there's nothing improper. And I certainly was very much taken aback by the suggestion that. That might be the case. Another point that was very, just very quickly, and I'll give it to you very quickly, rather than read you my full prepared remarks on this subject, I think you'd rather not hear those this evening. But was the fact that it was such a brief meeting, it was a twelve minute meeting. And is it not the case that when matters are referred to a committee, that there should be in-depth discussion, there should be vigorous debate? Well, yes, that's true and very often there is, that's certainly one of the reasons that the council refers matters to one of its committees. To provide an opportunity and a venue for a full and vigorous discussion of the merits or disadvantages of some proposed measure. So why didn't it take place in the twelve minute meeting? Well, frankly, because on several occasions during that meeting, I did present to Counselor Susa. The opportunity to add to other comments, to ask questions, to do, to say whatever he chose to say. Substantively about the legislation. And he simply wanted it made known that he had no interest in recommending it for referral to the council. He had nothing to say more substantively about the matter. Now, I don't know if I was supposed to debate with myself. Or was I supposed to, you know, play doubles advocate, I don't know quite what I was supposed to do. But it's it's rather ludicrous to assume that there's going to be an opportunity for a full-throated debate. When there's only one side willing to discuss, so it is what it is. I explained at the meeting to the public and to Counselor Susa that. So be it, it'll be reported back as it is, I'm in favor, you're not, it's it's a wash, nothing is done. So we only wasted twelve minutes. I was fully, I would have been there for three hours if we had chosen to engage in a very thorough debate. Maybe that'll take place this evening, nonetheless, I simply wanted to make those comments known because. There were public comments made, it's in the video, there were public comments expressed to the counselors, to all of the counselors by email. And I simply wanted to make clear what had transpired, I thank you very much.
Mister, Mister President?
Yes.
Seeing that you brought up my attendance at that meeting, I'd like to say something on my behalf.
Please go right ahead.
Sitting at a meeting, there's three people on the committee, one was unable to make it. So I'm there with the gentleman who is the president of the council, chairman of the committee and co-sponsor of this ordinance. He's condemning me for not spending three hours trying to convince him to change his mind. But what did he do in those twelve minutes to try to get me to change my mind because he knew I wasn't going to? And I knew he wasn't going to change his. If the third person was there. And we didn't know how that person was thinking, then we would have been able to conduct a presentation on both sides. And then we could have gotten maybe two people to go one way or the other. So don't condemn me for not asking you a lot of questions, I knew your position from day one.
And as well, Counselor, I knew yours from day one and you make a good point. But we can't exactly conjure up the presence of a of a third person when there is no third person there. So it was a matter of the, what's the expression, you know, the irresistible force meeting the immovable object, right? Neither of us were about to change our position and we're entitled to that and we're entitled to vigorously defend ourselves in that regard. I welcomed any opportunity for input, questions, criticism. You know, I could do a tap dance, but there was no other useful use of the time at that point. So we did vote to adjourn. Thank you. Yeah, moving on to legislation practice. Resolution FY twenty three dash zero zero one, recognizing the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. We have had a first reading of this at our at our last meeting. It certainly has received vigorous public support, both at that meeting and again this evening. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second, thank you, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
And Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much.
And I realize when I voted, my mic was off, so I know Deborah heard it, but it was a yes.
Microphones once again. Moving on to petition twenty twenty-three dash zero zero five, emergency petition, twenty twenty-three town election warrant. At our last meeting, this matter was introduced and we had a rather detailed explanation as to what it entailed. So we must finally consider it this evening, and this is we've considered this for treatment as an emergency measure. And accordingly, we have some special procedures to observe. Firstly, the council must first vote to declare and accept the emergency preamble. I will read very briefly the emergency preamble. In accordance with section two dash seven B of the Home Room Rule Charter, an emergency measure shall be introduced in the form and manner prescribed for measures generally except that it shall be plainly designated as an emergency measure and shall contain statements after the enacting clause declaring that an emergency exists and describing its scope and nature in clear and specific terms. A preamble which declares and defines the emergency shall be separate voted separately voted on and shall require the affirmative vote of two thirds of the town's council. I would I would entertain a motion for consideration of the emergency preamble.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If we could have, please a roll call vote on the emergency preamble.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Just Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Second step is that the council must vote to spend section eighteen readings of the council rules and procedures. And a roll call vote for this would require a two thirds vote.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? And seeing none, I would ask for a roll call vote, please, on that.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
And Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. And finally, a vote on the main motion, on the major vote. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
And a second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, Consular Wood.
No, it used to be a joke that I would ask, what happens if we don't approve a town election every time? So I will ask you through through you to the attorney, what happens if we don't approve this town election?
This one might be a little trickier because it it's kind of like not your your typical warrant, but I think it would likely end up in court in some fashion.
Thank you. I firmly support this measure.
Thank you very much. Yes, Consular Gallagher.
I mean, I just want to clarify, Mr. President, if I could, that you you're not going to read the whole thing, right? It's just just to be clear that we are voting for a special town election on January seventh.
That is correct.
Twenty-three.
That is correct.
The nomination papers will be available X tomorrow. So I just want to get those things out there if we're not going to read it. There'll be a special town election specifically to elect eight counselors as written in the preamble on January seventh.
That is correct.
Maybe something else on the ballot.
So did you any objection by the council? I I will omit the reading, but I will gladly reconsider if you choose.
That's fine.
I see no motion. Okay. If we could, please move to a roll call vote on that.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Item C. Order F Y twenty-three dash zero one two, let the voters decide. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make two motions for changes in this order. My first motion is to strike the first two whereas is in the order.
Okay, is there, is that a single, that's a single motion that we'll act upon?
Motion, that's the first one.
I'll second for discussion.
All right, for discussion, it's been seconded and discussion?
Well, so I'll explain why now. I do not think that those two lines are actually needed within the order. I would like to keep this order simple and straightforward, as I would hope the council would do if this moves forward. So that taking these out do not change of, and Mr. Rollins, correct me if I'm wrong, any substance to the actual question that's being asked.
No, the the whereas clauses won't go on the ballot.
Which I understand, but.
So, yeah, it doesn't change the substance at all. In fact, the initial drafting of the question and the explanation was drafted by me in accordance with what ninety-four G contemplates. And it is about as neutral of a explanation and question as there can be. So
Right.
That's how that process works under ninety-four G when you send it to the ballot.
So I'm not looking to change the question. I'm just looking to change how the the order is being presented.
Understood. Further discussion? Yes, Consular Wood.
Just simply that those two items are actually facts, so I don't know what striking them would actually do to change the facts because.
Because there are other facts involved in this that if you want to bring those in, you could probably make this order two to three pages long. So what I'd rather do is just state what we're doing for the question versus trying to do some other things to add to it. I don't think it's unreasonable, hence the reason I put the motion in.
Okay, I I won't be supporting that.
Very good. Further comments at all? Consular Gallagher.
So thank you, Mr. President. I guess my question would be if this passes, what would be the question to the voters?
Right, the question, the question, the only thing that goes on the ballot is at the bottom. Should the town of Bridgewater, where it starts in quotation, should the town of Bridgewater? And then follow that all the way to the end with the explanation. That's that's it.
So the explanation would be section two exception. That's the explanation?
No, section, where it says should the town, and then it talks about what it's contemplating for an exception. And then it's taught, so that first part, section two exception, and merit the definition of what a marijuana retailer is is part of what the question is. Then you go to down below in the explanation about what you're actually voting on. So it says, should the town of Bridgewater adopt the following amendment? A medical marijuana treatment center licensed or registered not later than July one, twenty seventeen that has been continuously engaged in the cultivation, manufacture, or sale of marijuana marijuana products to marijuana establishments engaged in the same type of activity under Massachusetts general laws shall be permitted to convert to a marijuana retailer as defined under Mass General Laws, chapter ninety-four G, section one. Pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, chapter ninety-four G, section two, three, there shall be no more than two possible conversions of medical marijuana treatment centers to marijuana retailers. Marijuana retailer is defined as follows. So so that's a yes or a no, right? Should should the town adopt that exception? Yes or no?
So it's not, so that in essence, there's still a ban in the town.
Correct.
Allowing them to convert.
All I did was take what you guys were proposing and narrow it to an actual question. And that is really the question that's being asked. What you're saying is, should it be allowed that those two particular medical marijuana facilities be allowed to convert to retail? That's the question, period.
So the fact, the the but the perception is going to be and is right now is that we're voting to allow retail sales of marijuana in Bridgewater. That's basically what the perception is. The reality is, if you read this, is we're we're asking the voters to make an exception to the ban to allow these two medical marijuana facilities to convert.
That's right.
Okay.
That's exactly right.
So I mean, I can't support this simply because I I I think that the legislature is taking care of this issue. But we're trying to beat the legislature to the punch here by saying we'll beat them to the punch. The legislature, based on the the court cases from Mansfield and Bourne.
Mr. President, with all due respect, I don't think this has anything to do with with my proposal.
That, yes, Consular, I would agree.
So I'll save my thoughts for that.
Thank you. Yes, Consular Moore.
Question for the town attorney through you, Mr. President?
Yes.
What is the purpose of a whereas clause?
So so usually that's for the proponent of the legislation when it's in order or ordinance to say these are the reasons that I am bringing this order or ordinance. It oftentimes is not at all reflective of what that order or ordinance actually becomes. So when a proponent of legislation in our form of government brings something forward, oftentimes their whereas clauses are efforts to propose what they're trying to bring forward, which is perfectly acceptable within the confines of that order. But it has no bearing on what becomes the actual ordinance or what appears on the ballot in this case.
They're just arguments, basically.
They're arguments. That's exactly what they are of by the proponent who brought the legislation forward. Like, you could have had competing legislation that said something different with all different whereas clauses, right? So as I explained, actually, the first time that we discussed this, I said, I had nothing to do with the whereas clauses. I didn't draft them. That that's for the proponent of the legislation.
And are they typically used to provide context to people in the future who read the legislation and are interested in understanding the detail behind why it was presented by that person?
Why it was presented by that person, yes. So it provides context to the proponent. It doesn't provide provide context to what the vote actually is, right? So that's right.
Thank you. Further discussion on the proposed on the motion? Seeing now the motion before us then is for is to strike the first two whereas paragraphs. And I would ask, please, for a roll call vote on that motion.
Mr. Wood?
No.
Mr. Columbotus? Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
No.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
And Dr. Perry?
No.
Three in favor. Five opposed.
Mr. President, I have one more motion.
Yes, please.
But the line says therefore, I'd like to make a motion to strike out special or.
To strike out the the terms special or?
Yeah.
So in other words, you would, you're asking that the measure be read therefore be it be be it ordered that a question be placed on the next?
Regular town election.
Regular town election ballot with a yes or no response available in this form. Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion. All right. And discussion?
So the reason I'm proposing this is technically if this were to pass, my understanding, and the town attorney can correct me, this would be eligible to be on the January seventh ballot. I think we have enough going on on that ballot with the changes in the makeup of the council, people understanding what they are, bringing hopefully new people on the council, having others reelected to also add this as a question. It also gives the voters an additional three months roughly in order to educate themselves on the pros and the cons. And I'm going to make this statement. I do take a little bit of a disconcerting approach to hear people get up and say voters aren't going to understand what they're voting for. We have to give them the ability to educate themselves. I've always said that is the way that we get things done. So by putting it in April, it gives more time for both sides of the equation to prepare, to give their information, and to allow the voters to go into what's a regularly scheduled meeting in April, which people are aware of to make this decision. That that's my rationale for that.
Yes, Consular Wood.
The the reason I added both knowing that we would potentially have eleven seats up for election is simply that I want to make sure it was done in an election so it didn't cost the town town any additional dollars. But secondly, to your exact point, the reason that this is probably best on the seventh is the fact that there are eight seats up, and we're going to draw out a lot of people from the town that wouldn't normally show up in April. So when there was, when there was criticism of the vote last year, it was that the voters didn't turn out. And so if we keep it on the seventh, this will probably be one of the larger town elections that we've ever had. And there should be no discussion after that about the fact that people didn't know that they should turn out to vote and weren't educated about the question and and didn't know there was going to be an election. Because there should be signs all over the neighborhoods and it's actually, in my mind, the seventh is probably the best to get the best opinion from the voters directly, best opportunity that we have.
With all due respect, that's Mr. Wood's speculation. There's no empirical data that will show that a special election draws out anymore or any less of the voters.
Consular Gallagher, please.
Thank you. I'm kind of torn whether we do it January seventh or in 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 April. On on this, on the subject of this, if we vote this tonight, does a clock start ticking where we have to have an election within a certain period of time?
It really depends on what you order, right? And I was actually going to make the suggestion
Right.
that you all, it probably makes the most sense for clarity and for administration by the town clerk that you actually vote the date, right? Or or you don't vote a date, right? And and then you can come back and vote a date. But I I think the easiest, most efficient way to do this is that you actually say a date certain that it's going to go on the ballot, right? It can be the regular town election in April. It can say the special town election in January. We know we're going to have both those elections, right? So I would almost say you want to be as specific as possible so that this doesn't become an issue when really this isn't the issue you all are debating.
And and with all due respect to the town attorney, the next regular scheduled election will have a date. I don't think we have to put that date today. I think it'll it'll administer itself.
So so my next question would be through you, Mr. President, to the town manager. Do you see any other special elections before April? You might propose, whether it be, I mean, I know we have to vote on the debt exclusion for the BP. We might be spending money on roads. I don't know. But I'm just saying, do you? I mean, it's a lot of elections for our our town. If if, I mean, I guess my question we're going to have an election January seventh. The question is, does this go on that ballot? But we are going to have an election in in April. Do you anticipate another election that we need to vote on something for outside of January seventh or April twenty-fourth or whatever?
I don't, I'm not planning on asking the council to have any other election other than those those two.
Do you plan on putting anything else on January seventh? Is it with this?
I have, the only possible thing that that's out there that could go on is the debt exclusion for the Bristol Plymouth School Project.
Do you think that will get on there? Do you think that'll get on here?
I'm not positive yet. I'm not giving a definitive answer, but.
If, I mean, we got to, I don't know, so.
And largely, I I'm sorry, that's largely up to the council. You know, the council is going to control the ballot.
It all out there. Give January seventh, vote on the council, vote on this, vote on, well, whatever. Anyway, I don't know how I'm going to vote on this. But I do think we should vote on a date. I'd agree with the town attorney.
I'll make a motion to amend the amendment. And.
Is there a second?
Second.
Well, I got to make the motion first. Because I think I think the motion on the table, the first amendment was to strike the words on the next special. And so not having my typewriter in front of me, but change it to be placed on a January seventh town election instead of on the next special or regular town election. So the the wording would be changed to to be placed on the January seventh town election ballot.
A second for discussion.
And discussion, gentlemen?
As, Mr. President, as I've said before, I think the January seventh election is there's a lot going on. There's not a lot of time between then, now and then. I think we've heard plenty of people get up and talk about educating about things that we need to consider for this across the board. And I'm talking about the entire town, not the town council. So I really think it'd be doing a disservice to the public by putting this on that particular ballot with everything going on and not enough time.
Then let's not put this forward then. Let's vote this down.
Consular Columbotus.
I would assert that ninety days is a long time for people to get educated.
Ninety days is what? A long time. Plenty of time. Take care.
We could take the position that if nothing has changed from April twenty twenty-one until We could take the position that if nothing has changed from April 2021 until now, then, you know, 90 days maybe is, is perfectly adequate. Further discussion, Counselor Moore?
I think building on what Counselor Wood said, I do personally think you, you will get a bigger turnout in January election. I think we're going to have to publicize that. There are a lot of new roles that are up. We just passed an emergency order to get the election to happen. People are going to be pulling papers. We're trying to get, fill the council. I think that's exactly the type of environment you want to create to get the biggest percentage of voters to weigh in on this. So I, I, I like the idea of trying to couple it with an election that I personally think will have more, more turnout.
Mr. President?
Thank you. Yes.
With, with all due respect, again, we have no idea how many people are going to come out on January, on January 7th. We have no idea how many people are going to pull papers. We have no idea how many people are going to run for council. So with that being said, we know, I will say for certain that in April, we will have three town counselors up for reelection. And that being said, with three, I think that affords not only the time, but the ability to put this on that particular ballot and let people digest it across the board and not have to worry about this being looked like it's ran, ran through. I fully support putting this in front of the voters. I've said that since day one. I said that five years ago. Nobody listened. Nobody gave me support. Here we are today, but what I'm trying to do is craft this so that it's fair and equitable to everybody involved.
Thank you, Counselor. Yes, Counselor Moore?
So one of the things I just want to highlight is the, the April election will be three people running that just ran in January. And I, again, it's personal opinion, to your point, there, there are no facts, but I do think you will see a lower turnout for three people that were just elected three months prior. And you might even see fewer participants trying to run against them, right? So I, I do worry about that. I worry about the proximity of these two elections. And I think it will negatively impact the second. So I do encourage us to think about the first as the better choice for more turnout.
Counselor Souza?
Yes. I think we just heard a few minutes ago from the town manager that we may be having an override in April. They always bring out a big turnout, you know? Because they're looking at where our taxes are today and now they're asking us to put up some more money. And I think overrides always bring out a bigger population. So that might be a reason why we want to move this out to April.
Thank you. Further, Counselor, yes, Counselor Wood?
So when I wrote those four or five words, I thought that maybe we would have an April election for the eight seats. But obviously the timetables have changed. And so, you know, not wanting to add any additional expenses to the town clerk's office tied the language to special war next and it was that simple. So the, the motion on the table right now is to change it to a specific date. And, and hopefully we all come to that conclusion. Thanks.
Mr. President, through you, I know we have the, the town clerk here. Would it be acceptable to ask her a question? Clarification?
I, I would approve that if.
Mrs. Hunt?
Could we impose?
If we have this vote in January or April, are there any differential in the expenses for either, either date to have this particular question added to a ballot?
I don't believe it makes any difference in cost.
Thank you.
Back to square one. So the motion before us is to consider a particular date.
In priority.
Well, well, he made an amendment. Yeah, I made an amendment to his amendment.
You made an amendment to his amendment that wasn't passed.
We were still discussing.
You made a separate amendment. You can't amend.
No, you can, you can have two levels of amendments under Roberts.
His, his has to be.
I'll go with the town attorney. We have to vote on my amendment first.
Determined first.
No, and in fact, he was out of order because we hadn't made a motion on the main order yet to be amended. So we could go with that line.
There's a motion to amend by Mr. George.
And it was seconded by Mr. Gallagher.
There was a motion to amend an amendment that wasn't.
Approved.
Didn't exist.
My original amendment was seconded.
So it's actually a subsequent motion to amend. So there's two pending motions to amend that are entirely different from each other, correct?
No, I changed his language.
Right, but you can't.
Change my language if it's not adopted.
So I think.
We vote on, we vote on my amendment first and then we vote on Mr. George's amendment, but.
We vote on Mr. We vote on.
Amendment doesn't exist.
Mr. President, can we, can we call the town attorney, please?
We've just, you vote on Mr. George's first. Whatever the decision is, you go to Mr. Woods. And if Mr. Wood needs to fine tune his language based on whatever the decision is on Mr. George's amendment, he can do that. And then you vote on Mr. Woods. And then that's the easiest, most efficient way to do this.
So regardless of whether his passes or fails, we're still going to vote on.
Correct. There's two motions to amend pending right now. That's right.
All right. So we're going to vote on Counselor George's amendment. Yes, Counselor Moore?
Can we repeat the motion?
Thank you. That's just what I was about to do. If you would for clarity, please.
So my motion is and therefore to strike special or. So it would read placed on the next regular town election ballot. That's my motion.
And.
We discussed it.
I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Sure. Dr. Perry?
Sorry, the error.
I'm going to say no on this.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Mr. Chase?
No.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. Columbotus?
No.
And Mr. Wood?
No.
So it's seven, two in favor, seven against, six against, sorry.
Thank you. Who takes a crack at it next?
I apparently have a standing amendment with a second, so we could, so motion to vote or. Correct. So it was straight to be, it would say in its final form to be placed on the January 7th regular, January 7th town election ballot.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you. Any further discussion on that? We would have, we have please a roll call vote on the question of having, approving the January 7th date.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. George?
No.
Mr. Souza?
No.
And Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Seven in favor to, six in favor to opposed.
Motion to approve order FY 2312. Let the voters decide.
I would second the motion.
Discussion?
For discussion.
I, I guess I, I'll, are you going to read this again?
No, but I have. I believe I have priority since I made.
Go ahead. I'll, I go right ahead, Counselor.
You know, I'm a longtime reader of the Washington Post and for a long time they head up tagline when you signed in that said democracy dies in darkness. And I feel that if we don't go to the voters and ask their opinion directly, we're operating in darkness. And so that's why I put this up. It's, it's, as has been greatly discussed now, the measure does not lift the general ban. It simply makes an exception that is in line with 94G and makes it clear that we're supporting the, the, the conversion if they want to. We're not forcing them if they want to convert into retail. And I think this, you know, we've heard a lot of empirical data, but no solid evidence ever. I dug really deep trying to get rates on DUI and other things in the state of Massachusetts. Colorado doesn't count, you know? California doesn't count. What's happening in Massachusetts? The Cannabis Commission has done a really tight job of making sure that no one under 21 goes into those shops, no one under 21 buys and limits the amount of money, limits the amount of THC that you can purchase at any given point in time and how much you can purchase over a period. They've done an excellent job on that. And I think that Wareham and Brockton and other towns like that show that there hasn't been an explosion of problems with a billion dollars in sales of marijuana on the retail market, never mind what's happening on the black market or the secondary market there, or even with the medical market. And so I think it's time that we let the clear voices, you know, the, the pure voices of Bridgewater make, make this determination. You know, a person stood up earlier and said, why have I been doing this for four years? Well, it's, it's pretty darn simple. It's not my opinion. In 2016, my district voted yes, 57%. Just like Frank Seuss's district voted yes, by a large majority. And so I am simply representing my constituents in a way they voiced their opinion in 2016 and again last year. So when I bring this forward, I'm representing my constituents who elected me into this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further comment? Counselor Perry?
Thank you. Two questions. Through Mr. Wood, could you reiterate the, the vote of the CDC on your let the voters decide paperwork here? What was the vote on?
Well, we didn't vote on this. This was reference material. We voted to recommend for approval.
It was three zeros?
Yes.
And then through the, Mr. President, to the town attorney, could you give a little synopsis again on the, the town of Born situation? When their, their vote, their, their whole situation? I believe they were a, a town that voted against, but, and, and just how the whole interaction goes with the state situation. Could you give us a synopsis of that if you, if you know it?
I do know it, but not really. Because that's a super general question like that, that, that there are multiple cases that address, one addresses specifically zoning. One, the, the Born case addresses general ordinances or bylaws. There are specific distinctions that the Supreme Judicial Court now makes between a zoning ordinance and a general bylaw, which is something that was a bit unclear under 94G previously. I can't predict what the legislature is ever going to do, so I'm not going to bother trying. So I guess that question is too broad. Like I, I don't even know how to answer that, right? It's such a broad.
Well, just reiterate kind of the steps or what happened in the town of Born based on how they voted based on.
They voted on a general bylaw prohibition.
Right.
And through very specific means, the SJC essentially said that there, the prohibition was valid, right? But, but there are very specific intricacies and complexities to that case that it's, it's too detailed of a conversation and it's too hypothetical to weigh in on. I don't want to confuse the issue here.
Yeah.
That isn't the issue that's before you.
I'm saying.
So that issue also could be the basis at some point now or in the future of litigation. Way more appropriately discussed in an executive session than in an open meeting. So I, I don't really know the question, but I can tell you that the SJC has spoken to zoning bylaws that prohibit and to general bylaws that prohibit. And they have very specific opinions about which of those are valid and why. And that's what those cases are really about. I don't think that has anything to do with what's before you. It, it, it's not relevant at all.
Okay. And just as an extension of that, do you have an idea timeframe wise when we might hear more from a state level on the issue?
No, because, because those were court cases.
Right. But just as far as, you know, licensing in general for retail and.
No, that would just be, yeah, that would be sheer speculation about what the legislature is going to do. Good luck guessing.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Souza.
I did a little something that no one else on the committees did. I went and talked to the police chief a few months back. Of course, the chief of police belongs to the Massachusetts Police Chief Association. And one of the things they do is they discuss crime in their area, what's going up, what's coming down, what they think the causes are. And the majority of those people who had retail recreational marijuana showed there was differences in crimes. And not, you know, maybe the burglaries weren't as high as they thought they were going to go, but they had more accidents, serious accidents, and many more people getting stopped for driving under the influence of marijuana. And he said, if you, you people put that through, I'm going to need two more officers at least to try to keep up with this stuff. Then the next thing I did is I went and talked to the fire station. Well, not the station. I talked to a person down there and he said, well, we have facts that over 90% of the people who use level, higher level of drugs, and we're over there giving them shots of knock on over and over again in some cases. They've all started out with marijuana, over 90% of them. It's a proven fact. They start out with marijuana and then they switch over to other drugs. And this is a major problem, he says. And he says, there's weeks when we go out 10, 12 times here in Bridgewater to give a shot to somebody who overdosed. What's going to happen if this thing just gets opened up? They're just watching it, even buying as Bill says. They can buy it all over the world and bring it in. It doesn't matter. They're going to bring it in. But this is the other thing that they're watching for. Are we going to be able to keep up with these additional problems?
Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor.
So I just, I just want to make now a general statement in regards to what we're discussing on, on the main order. I've already said it. Five years ago, I was all for putting this decision per se, the decision at the time for the zoning in front of the voters, I had zero support. I've never said that I have changed my view on that. Every year, if it's come up or if someone's asked me, I've been steadfast that this needed to go to a townwide vote. I also, as for the statements about no one voicing support, I think that's incredibly inaccurate. But more so, the people that I've spoken to that have supported it, to be brutally honest, don't feel like they should be vilified for their support. And if you want to see a prime example of that, go back to the town council meetings that we did discuss. There were people in the audience booing, hissing, catcalling. We got emails during the meeting from people saying, don't listen to that. I'll leave out what they were called. So there isn't any wonder why people aren't coming out to support it in public? In private, they may or may not. But at the end of the day, everything that's being discussed, both for the pros and the cons, need to be considered by the voters, not by the town council. And then they decide. And I, I'm a little puzzled that people think this is a foregone conclusion that if this goes to a townwide vote, it's going to pass. I'm not, I'm not sure of that. I don't think anyone can be 100% sure of that. But as long as we give people the ability to educate themselves on the entire matter, then we should put this in front of the voters. And by the way, I do take exception to changing this form of government, the way it is. This was put in the charter specifically to allow the town council to put things in front of the voters. Put things in front of the voters that we felt needed to have a townwide vote. This is one of the main things I liked about the charter and this is what I think we should be doing. I'm not totally happy with the way it's structured. That doesn't change my opinion around the fact that it should go to a townwide vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. If I may, I'd like to echo some of the same sentiments. Firstly, with respect to the fact that we don't often see expressions of support from among the community. Now, it so happens that we did at our last meeting, I did at our last meeting, recite the content of three emails that were received by the council expressing support for this measure. Generally speaking, I would agree with you, Counselor, that, you know, people are, are afraid of being vilified by opponents of the legislation. Because I think that as we can see, it's over the course of a long period of time, it's certainly stoked some very strong passions. And I think that the response has been vigorous and I certainly enjoy vigorous debate, but it's not vigorous debate we've been seeing. We've been seeing really vociferous opposition is what we've been seeing. Now personally, my opinion is that this is appropriate for presentation before the voters, for the voters to decide as it is so entitled. Uh, in fact, I've said that before. I said that back in April of two thousand twenty-one, and I've said it since. How can we, what I've specifically said rhetorically is how can we be faulted for wanting to put this before the voters to let them decide? And I've yet to hear a compelling reason expressed to me as to why we should be faulted for that. I understand all your concerns, uh, about, you know, health and safety, uh, you know, expenses the town might incur, all kinds of considerations of that sort. Uh, but the bottom line is, I feel much more comfortable with a decision of this importance, of this magnitude, giving the voters of the town an ample opportunity to weigh in. Uh, that's my personal opinion, and it really hasn't changed. Thank you. Yes, Counselor Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and first of all, I want to, I want to touch base on the committee meeting reports that you, that you had, and I did watch, I did watch the twelve-minute clip that you, you sent to us. I actually watched it twice, so you might have two views on YouTube. How's that? But I, I mean, with all respect to the, the questions that, the legitimate questions that the public asked you, I can understand their concern based on the, the, um, the seriousness and the passion about this issue, but I do agree with you. I mean, if we sponsor something and it goes to a committee that we sit on, that's just the way, that's just the way it goes, is the way we're set up. So I, I don't fault, I don't fault the committee for that at all. I think you had to act on it and so forth. That's just the nature of, of the way it was structured. However, I was a little disappointed that there really wasn't a dialogue about the issue, whether it was supposed to be generated by the other member of the committee or you. Uh, there wasn't any discussion about, about it. So perhaps, I know there was some discussion, there was some concern at the last meeting that this did not need to be referred to two committees, so maybe that committee is the one that they didn't want it to be referred to, and perhaps looking back at it, that was correct. But I do think that the, the, um, the Community Economic Development Committee that met before this meeting, at least there was some dialogue about it and, and, um, and they had a presentation about certain aspects of revenue and costs. So, um, to get that out of the way, I just wanted to, to touch base on the committee reports. And I want to thank the citizens' comments earlier this evening, who got up and spoke in opposition to this being brought forward to, to the voters, because this is a, this is a matter that we have discussed as a council now off and on for the past six years. And, you know, we're here tonight again to talk about it. But let's not forget, which nobody has talked about yet, Counselor Souza did touch on it a little bit regarding public safety aspect. But let's not forget Dr. Kern's comments two weeks ago, when he got up and spoke about how he has seen an uptick in his, his profession regarding the psychological and emotional issues that are going on in our society as a result of increased usage of marijuana. Let's not forget about the gentleman from the wall, Mr. Cabral, Josh Cabral, that spoke to us two weeks ago about the uptick in his facility of young people particularly being treated schizophrenic, uh, issues and so forth. These are related, all related to the effects that the uptick in usage of marijuana has had in our society. Yes, there are people that will use it responsibly. But for the young people to be tied to this so much as far as the increase in, um, mental illness should be a concern to this council. We also know that there, the traffic accidents and traffic deaths are up considerably, and the, after the public safety officials do their research or investigation, it's a result more times than not because of substance abuse relating to the usage of marijuana. So there's a whole social impact of the usage of marijuana in our society. Yes, people, some people will use it responsibly, but this council, to take this issue up so many times, is really unheard of. And it's really, it's, it, it really does trouble me that we have spent so much time on this. As Counselor Wood has said, his constituents in his district voted for this twice through a binding question at the April six, at the November two thousand sixteen ballot, and then at a non-binding referendum question a couple of years ago at the town meeting. But let's, let's also try to educate the people in our community that there is a mechanism for them, if they want something on a ballot. The town charter does allow them through an initiative petition to put something on the ballot, if they want something that bad enough. There is that avenue. I don't think really a lot of our citizens know about that with this form of government. It doesn't have to be sponsored by a counselor. If they're passionate about an issue, particularly something like this, it only takes fifty signatures. You know, it takes us a hundred and fifty to get on a ballot. It won't on January seventh, but the, it's not that difficult to have an initiative brought before us by the citizens of this community if they want it. I just think that this particular question does not solve the issue of medical or recreational marijuana in this town. This is a, this is a piece of legislation that is targeted, that is earmarked, and that is direct to benefit only a specific business in the community. If we're going to allow retail marijuana, my position is, let's allow it. Let the people vote that question, but that's not the question before the voters. They're going to think that it is. But we all know that the question before the voters is only to allow the medical facilities to convert, which, as I have said many times, the legislature is taking care of this issue, taking care of this language. We don't need to. Others are going to be left out of the process of those that do want to open up a, 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 a retail marijuana facility. Not that I'm advocating for that, but because of this, that we're allowing this, I think you might see other lawsuits come forward and say, hey, look, you're letting them do it. Why wasn't I given a fair shot at a license? We're going to see that. And I hope this council is aware of that. Some of you may not be here then. So I think that it's unusual that we have spent this much time as a council over the last six years. This is, I think, our third attempt to approve this, and we don't even need to put this before the voters. If we wanted to, to vote on it, we could do it on our own anyway. So, um, I'm going to vote no on this, because I just don't think this is the right message to send to our community. It's not the right message to send to our young people. We have a, an excellent university in our community. We have a large senior population in this community. We have other things that we can be spending our time on to better our community, not putting retail marijuana for sale in the town. To talk about the estimates of five hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue, as, as Counselor Souza said, if you factor in the work that the police and fire alone are going to have to incur with that, and are probably already incurring it with it being sold in our surrounding communities, that money's gone. That money's gone. We all know that.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Wood?
I guess I'm done.
Thank you. Um, again, you know, let the, let the voters may become educated and decide. And you're, and, and the point is well taken that in February, whoever is sitting around this table may decide to open it wide open. You know, it's, it's not set in stone that anything can't be overturned, so, um, this, this opportunity on January seventh is to, is to let the voters decide, you know, which direction they want to go. Um, a- and so, um, one other point, I can't remember, so I'll stop now. Thanks.
Thank you.
Counselor Moore? So actually, building on what Counselor George said, uh, there is a large population of people that support it. Um, and so I certainly have heard emails and appreciated them from people who do not. But there is, there are voices that are in favor of it. They are professionals, they are members of the community that you interact with. And, you know, I agree that to actually have a good debate, we have to make sure we're not vilifying either side. The other piece of this for me is really trying to pinpoint what the actual question is. And a lot of the feedback that we hear is really about marijuana use in general, right? The state issue. Marijuana is now here. Anyone can travel ten minutes in any direction and get it. What is the impact of that on the state in any community? It's, you know, increased DUIs, those sorts of things. But I think that's actually a, a different question than what we're being asked here, or asking the voters to vote on, which is, does retail proximity, does having a store near you make that situation better or worse? And if you look at the evidence, the early evidence is clearly worse. Like, if you were the only shop in town and people drove in for forty miles a while around, it, it was a rough situation and crime increased. But if you actually look at the longitudinal studies, like over time, as it became a mass market product, those, those big spikes in issues from the data that I've seen went away. And you are now starting to see in towns that have, that have retail outlets, people aren't driving as far. There's more education about marijuana use in the town now because you, you have an operating facility. So you're, you're getting messages out, out to, to people that probably need them. Um, and so I, I am supporting this because I do think that the residents need to look at those, that information and decide on the question themselves. Um, but I, but I do want to make sure that people are, are deciding on the right question. It isn't a, it isn't a decision about marijuana. It is, it is a question of does having a store near you make things better or worse? And I think that's what people need to educate themselves on for the vote.
Thank you, Counselor. I'd just like to add that, um, personally, um, I haven't had marijuana in fifty years. Uh, I can't remember fifty years ago when I last had marijuana. But to give you some indication, if you've not thought about it, about the way in which the market for marijuana has changed, I suspect that a large portion of marijuana sales are no longer these days, uh, strictly for marijuana for smoking. And as you know, there are various kinds of edibles and, and, and gummies and whatnot. And, uh, uh, the purchasers, uh, have changed over the years. I know any number of, uh, older citizens who have difficulty sleeping, who, who have, have suffered from anxiety or who have chronic pain issues and find relief from marijuana, uh, in some form, whether it's an edible, whatever it may be. So the point is, I, if I ever choose to, uh, again, after a fifty-year hiatus, uh, partake of marijuana in some form, I'd like to know that I can actually purchase it in my own town. Uh, it would be more convenient for me. It would be, uh, helpful, uh, less expensive for me than to travel elsewhere, and, uh, I think I ought to feel entitled to that as a citizen of the town, uh, since the Commonwealth has made it, uh, appropriate and acceptable. That's my comment. Anyone else? Well, look at that. Uh, where are we?
We're going to vote on my motion.
All right. Uh, we have a, uh, we have a motion and a second, and there's no further discussion, right? I.
Just to clarify.
Yes.
For approval of the Order twelve. Let the voters decide.
With the amendments.
As amended.
Right, as amended.
With the question on the January seventh ballot.
Okay. All right. Could we then please have a roll call vote?
Sure. Dr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Souza?
No.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Five to four, five to three, sorry. Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on. We have new business. Order F Y twenty-three dash zero one four. General fund free cash allocation to trust funds. Um, I would defer to the town manager for comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, uh, this order, uh, is our annual, uh, transfer of funds from our free cash, uh, as allocated to various trust funds under the council's, uh, free cash policy.
Make a motion to, to refer to the Budget and Budget and Finance Committee.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
And Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Order F Y twenty-three dash zero one five, Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund Equipment Transfers. Once again, please to the town manager.
Um, Mr. President, this simply, uh, transfers funding to, uh, purchase critically needed equipment at both the water and sewer departments.
Thank you.
Motion to refer to Budget and Budget and Finance Committees?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Colum, Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
All right, thank you. Order F Y twenty-three dash zero one six, Acceptance of Assistance to Firefighter Grant. Uh, Mr. Town Manager, please.
Uh, Mr. President, this, uh, really is a pretty sizable grant, um, from H H S. It, uh, funds the, uh, purchase of a new brush truck, uh, for the town in order for, to, uh, for, for the town, uh, to better, uh, confront, uh, brush fires and forest fires. The grant is, uh, two hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred thirty-six dollars. Uh, and the town will, uh, contribute ten percent of that, uh, for a new brush truck, which is roughly twenty, uh, two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you very much.
Motion to refer to the Budget and Bu- Budget and Finance Committees?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
And Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Uh, order F Y twenty-three dash zero one seven, Acceptance of Elder Services Grant. Uh, Mr. Dutton, please.
Mr. President, this, uh, grant helps fund, uh, efforts at our elder services department to reduce social isolation, isolation and loneliness, uh, through, uh, specific programming, and I will point out that we are receiving, uh, five thousand, two hundred and five dollars, uh, which is quite a coup, seeing as there were a total, uh, requests totaling two hundred and eighty-six thousand for only nineteen thousand to distribute. So the fact that we got a little over five thousand, uh, is pretty spectacular, so I did want to point that out.
Thank you.
Motion to refer to Budget and Budget and Finance Committees?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? And seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Order F Y twenty-three dash zero one eight, Acceptance of Elder Services Gift. Uh, Mr. Dutton, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rockland Trust Bank, uh, very generously donated three hundred dollars to, uh, offset the expense for the upcoming Senior Safety Expo, which is an annual event, so we thank Rockland Trust.
Motion to refer to Budget and Budget and Finance Committees?
Second.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion? And seeing none, if we would have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
And Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Order F Y twenty-three dash zero one nine, Establish Town Goals. Um, this is Burn Bruffold, uh, Counselor Moore. Counselor Moore, do you have a comment?
Sure. So it's just the time of year for us to establish the goals, uh, for the town manager and for the town to influence, uh, budget planning. And if we could, I'd like to make a motion to refer to Strategic Planning Committee.
And I would second that.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion, gentlemen? And seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And the eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Uh, order F Y twenty-three dash zero twenty, Town Clerk Election Stipend. Uh, this has been introduced by Counselor Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, um, we, you know, we all received a, a, an email from the town clerk within the past, uh, ten days or so, um, that, that position, um, really hasn't been reviewed in a few years, and that there are certain stipends that there was, would like to be instituted relative to the extra work that's being done with early voting, mail-in voting and all that. So I would request that this get referred to at least the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee, um, or rule, or Strategic Planning to take, take, to take a look at the town clerk's salary and recommend to the council any, any adjustments that. and recommend to the council any, any adjustments that need to be made. As we begin the budget process, I wouldn't expect anything, any changes to the salary to be done this fiscal year. I would ask that any, I would, through the discussion, that whatever changes we want to make to it, we incorporate it into the next fiscal year's budget.
Do you make a motion?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, any discussion, gentlemen?
Just want to clarify that it will go to Budget and Finance Committee. You brought me up.
Yeah.
Yes.
Both, both committees. Budget and Budget and Finance?
Yes.
Okay.
Just Budget and Finance.
All right. Was it Budget, Finance and FinCom or just Budget? Oh, thank you.
Yeah. That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
Thank you. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Sure. Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
And Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Just a question of point of information. Did we send all the other items to FinCom also? We did. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Just double checking.
Yes.
Because we want to make sure they hear all those things too.
Thank you. Order FY twenty-three dash zero twenty-one, uh, Town Council's Annual At-A-Glance Calendar, uh, introduced by Councilor Moore.
Uh, so the idea behind this, the council itself has a lot of annual activities, uh, such as goal setting, uh, town, town manager review, uh, two meetings a year for town input. And, uh, I'd like to give us the opportunity to look at the full calendar for the year and sequence those in a way where they're most effective. So having a goals meeting before we set the budget, having community input before we set the goals meeting, those sorts of things. So I'm proposing, uh, that the Strategic Planning Committee, uh, look at the fiscal year and, uh, take some of these big planning activities and, uh, schedule them, uh, for the year so that we can look at them and make sure they're in the right sequence and get a sense of when they can participate in different parts of that planning process.
Is that your motion?
My motion is to refer to Strategic.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion at all?
Just, um,
Counselor.
Just make sure when it gets into committee that you're looking at the charter requirements as well, because there's specific dates and sequences described in the document, um, that make it, make it, um, necessary for the town manager to execute on certain things.
Thank you. Uh, if we could have a
Planning a stipend for all these things being referred to.
Thank you, Counselor. If we could have, please a roll call vote.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Uh, order FY twenty-three, yeah, zeros are two zoning ordinance amend section eleven, uh, definitions, uh, brought forward by Councilor Moore.
Uh, so quick explanation on this. Counselor Gallagher actually mentioned it earlier. Affordable housing is an issue in Bridgewater. I agree with that. And I think a lot of families are looking to address that by supporting multi-generational in-law apartments in their homes. Uh, and a resident approached me who was looking to bring their parents, uh, into their, an extension of their home. Um, and the current zoning ordinance sets the square footage at six hundred square feet, uh, which for, um, you know, the average size of an apartment that in the U.S. right now is about nine hundred square feet. So, uh, they had asked me to sponsor and I, and I do and support, uh, changing this from six hundred square feet to eight hundred square feet, uh, to support just a, a better quality of life in an in-law apartment. The current zoning is actually set in a definition. Um, so there's a definition that includes the, the square footage restriction. And I'm looking to just, uh, switch it from six hundred to eight.
I did change a motion for referral to the Rules and Procedures Committee.
Shouldn't it go, it's zoning, so shouldn't it go to CDC and Planning Board? So.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be the motion.
On second.
Since the attorney said yes.
I'm not on those committees.
Then I, I'll
Now you'll listen to it.
I withdraw my motion. I withdraw my motion in favor of your motion. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? So the motion is for it to be referred to, um, uh, the, uh, Community and Economic Development Committee.
And Planning Board.
Thank you. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
And Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Ordinance FY twenty-three dash zero zero three General Ordinance Amend Administrative Code, Article Three, Section, uh, eleven A Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Committee. If, um, this has been introduced for, uh, first reading this evening, uh, I would be happy to read this, um, proposed ordinance. Was there's any objection? Order that the town council assemble vote to amend the following. Section eleven A Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Committee. Establish and term of office, there shall be a Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Committee consisting of at least five members and no more than nine members. The town manager in appointing members shall consider the following criteria. Traditionally underrepresented rep, residents, including race, religion, sexual orientation and identity. Residents with specific training on foundational principles of diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. Critical thinking skills, differential occupational, educational, business and community experience should also be represented. Uh, paragraph B, authorities and responsibilities. Such committees may, one, review all town policies and procedures to ensure a demonstrated commitment to the centering principles of the diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. Two, advise municipal officials and employees in complying with state and federal laws and regulations that involve diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging issues. Three, lead community education campaigns to engage the community about local issues related to the diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. Four, facilitate collaboration between the residents and town officials to create a culture that welcomes and celebrates all identities. The Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Committee is an advisory committee of the town. Interrelationships, one, town council, the Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Committee interacts with the town council through the town manager in the development of policies and legislation to the town manager. The Diversity Equity and Inclusion and Belonging Committee interacts with the town manager to communicate recommendations on town procedures and policies. The committee interacts with the Human Resources Department for the purpose of providing professional assistance to the committee. And paragraph three, other bodies. As occasion, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion and Belonging Committee interacts with a broad spectrum of multi-member appointed and elected bodies, including the Elder Affairs Committee, Citizen Advisory Committee, Disabilities Commission, Library Trustees, Housing Authority and Planning Board to carry out the commission's responsibilities. I would entertain a motion for, uh, I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
To adopt the change.
Motion to adopt. Just want to make sure.
All right. We, we have a, and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
And Mr. Wood?
No, just a, sorry, question. I must have missed something. Is this going to a committee? Because this is first reading.
It was not recommended for a committee.
We were just voting to approve it.
Right. Are we voting to keep it at the council level? Because we can't approve tonight. That'd be a clear charter violation.
It was to keep it at the council level.
At the council level.
Let's, let's, let's consider a further motion. Let's consider a further motion.
Okay. The motion was to keep it at the council level.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna make a motion to amend. Do I wait until after?
You're All right.
You can amend now.
Could I make a motion to amend the document, though? Not, not to amend the
Oh, you can do that when it comes back.
Okay.
That's fine. You're, you're just preferring that or not.
And if we did that before and I missed it, sorry.
Stay in here. It's coming back to the next meeting. Come back to the next meeting, which you have motioned.
We have a motion and a second. And if we could have a vote, please.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Rushton? Oops, sorry. Eight favor, zero opposed. It's late, late. I know.
Give stains.
Sorry.
Uh, we have before's ordinance FY twenty-three dash zero zero four, uh, general ordinance amend administrative code, article three, section twenty-six A. Tree Commission. Uh, I'd be happy to read this. Section twenty-six A Tree Committee, uh, established in term, um, term of office, there shall be a tree committee consisting of seven members, five voting members and two non-voting members. The town manager shall, based upon recommendations from the respective committees, appoint the following voting members. One member of the planning board, one member of the open space committee, and one member of the Bridgewater Improvement Association. Town manager shall appoint two voting members at large, at least one of which shall be a certified arborist, landscape, uh, landscape architect or an individual with comparable experience and training. The Bridgewater Tree Warden and the Bridgewater Roadway Superintendent, or his designate, shall serve as non-voting members. Paragraph B, authorities and responsibilities. The committee shall advise town officials, multiple member appointed bodies, appointed bodies, and the general public to promote activities that encourage the planting care and management of all existing and new public trees. Interrelationship, one, the town manager, the tree committee interacts with the town manager to communicate recommendations on town procedures and policies to the town council. The committee reports all activities to the town council through the town managers. Other bodies, as necessary, the committee interacts with other multiple member bodies within the town on issues of mutual concern, including the Agricultural Commission, Community Preservation Committee, Energy Committee, Conservation Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, Planning Board, Transportation Committee and zoning board of the fields. I would entertain a motion.
To move to Rules and Procedures Committee.
Thank you. Is there a second? Yes. Motion and a second. Any discussion? And seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
And Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving to citizen comments. If there are, uh, any citizens who would care to address the council, please limit your remarks to three minutes or less. Uh, do we have any takers? Yes, I believe we do. Mrs. Hanson, thank you.
I always have to talk. Um, just to speak about what happened tonight for the vote on the ballot question. I, I, I obviously am disappointed that it was approved to go on the ballot. But I just want to remind that this question is deceiving to people, you know, it's, um, you know, as far as educating people, we have a ban allowing this, if it should pass, makes it no longer a ban in town. I don't care how you call it. It's still, there's still a retail in the shops, so, in the town. So therefore, there's no longer a ban. Um, so that has to be somehow, um, it's just disappointing that it went through the way it's written. The fact that it was, went through is disappointing. Um, and the other thing is, um, just to touch base with what Mr., um, George had said about, um, there are people that are in favor, and I'm sure there are. They don't come here, but I don't necessarily feel necessarily that it's accurate that they all feel intimidated by us, people that are not in favor of retail. I've been to those meetings years ago when we were debating about medical and, um, or not medical, but debating to have, we already had medical, debating about having the retail shops. And I went to just about every single one. And I, I never personally saw or heard or witnessed any, what you had mentioned about, um, booing and hissing. I, I do know that there was probably a couple of times, but I've heard it from both sides. And last year's, I think it was last year, that non-binding question, I was out in the parking lot of the school, you know, holding up my sign like everybody, you know, or trying to promote, uh, uh, no vote. And I didn't have anybody, I didn't see anybody that was in the favor of, uh, no vote criticizing anybody that was, um, gonna vote yes. I do know, and I personally had it on me, all the people that were gonna vote yes, not all of them, but a lot of them went by and criticized, and particularly just as a note, young people. Um, they, um, were very disrespectful. So it works on both sides. And, um, that being said, the last thing is, um, just to get back to my questioning about whether it's legitimate to have a ordinance go to a committee that somebody has, um, proposed. That's a legitimate question. I wasn't the only one who had the question. I was probably just about the only one that brought it up. Um, but I had other people, and it wasn't just recent. I've seen it over the time. And I was like, how can that be? So I wanted to know. It's been answered. It's a done deal, but it wasn't specific to anybody, not accusing of anybody of being, um, not, I don't know what the word is I want, but, um, it was a reasonable question. It's been answered. So I just want to make sure you realize I wasn't singling out or accusing, um, I wasn't the only one asking that, but I've had other people ask, how can that be? But that's from previous times too. It wasn't just recent. So, um, I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't, you know, meant to be a big, you know, deal. It's, I got my answer. So, um, that's about it. I appreciate everybody's time. I just am disappointed that it went to ballot. They should probably figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanson. Uh, Mrs. Hunt?
I hate to keep you one more minute, but I just want to say thank you for a good meeting. I want to thank you for getting the, uh, January seventh election kind of organized and let you know that nomination papers, and saying this to the general public, anybody who's still hanging on and listening or listens to this recording, papers are ready. Uh, I watched Jolie put the nomination papers out, uh, today. So they are available in our office starting tomorrow morning at eight. And I will publish, um, on the town website, the election schedule that tells you, you know, how long nomination papers are going to be available, when they have to be turned back in, when the OZPF papers have to go in, all that sort of stuff. So, um, thank you very much for a good meeting. Good night.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunt. Uh, any further comment for, uh, yes, uh, Mrs. Flesch Cudero?
Hi, Rebecca Flesch Cudero, one thirty-five Deerfield Drive. Um, as I mentioned at the last meeting, and I think it's important to say it, given what's going on all over the world and in our country as well. I'm grateful to live in a country that supports public speech and in a community where town government is receptive to listening to what we have to say. That, of course, doesn't always mean we agree with each other. But the opportunity to present our concerns is there, and it's very important that that be acknowledged. Of course, BCCR is pleased that the town of Bridgewater will be observing the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day, and as Dr. Anderson said earlier tonight, to move forward and improve relationships. BCCR and Bridgewater State University would like to remind you, we are having two upcoming standouts in Bridgewater Center. On September thirtieth at three P.M., we will wear orange shirts. We invite everyone here and everybody that's listening to also come. The orange shirts are in memory of and in honor of the children who were forced to attend the Indian Residential Schools. And October tenth at ten A.M. will stand out in honor of Indigenous Peoples' Day, which is now the observed holiday in the town of Bridgewater. Thank you for sponsoring this, for voting on it and for hearing us out.
Thank you, Mrs. Flesch Cudero. Further comment, uh, any member of the public?
Good night, Mr. Jamie. Thank you very much. Uh, I'd like to begin with the council comments. And, uh, if I could begin, please, with, uh, Councilor Moore.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I wanted to thank everyone who spoke tonight. I think the way that this works is by exchanging ideas, um, and on both sides, making sure that we're open to ideas. And so I appreciated the comments at the end, the reminder that, uh, you know, that both sides might feel pressure to, uh, to sort of control what they say. And I encourage everyone to bring that, uh, bring their opinions to the, to the forefront. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, well, uh, this is your chance, public, run for office. We have eight seats up, January seventh. Nomination papers are available tomorrow. Do you have ideas? You don't like what you see? You want to just help out the town? This is your chance. And you only need fif, twenty-five signatures on a district ballot and fifty signatures on an at-large ballot. So there's a lot of people that have been talking about running for the past several weeks, several months. And where is this legislation? When are we gonna vote the new council? Here's your chance. It's not the best time of year to be running a campaign, but it is what it is. So I encourage those that have been thinking about it and those that, that might start thinking about it to run for office. We, we really need more
Those that have been thinking about it and those that, that might start thinking about it to run for office. We, we really need more um. People involved in the community. I want to um. Say thanks to the, those that organized the Town River Landing cleanup and two of my colleagues here, Counselor Souza and Counselor. George helped uh, clean up the Town River Landing. If you haven't been down there recently, there's been an awful lot of cleanup down there, particularly with brush. They've got some ideas that they want to have a couple of um. Uh, farmers markets in October. Um, so I just want to thank the efforts of the volunteers and businesses that even volunteered to take away some of the. Some of the um. Brush. I appreciate it. It was, it was an awful lot. I did get a touch of poison ivy though. I wasn't happy about it. Not bad. So, and I would just like to say to the town manager, we can't let people dump Christmas trees there anymore. It doesn't help. That was a lot of work for, for them to get rid of. Autumn Fest was a great success here in the town. Um. Before that, I did run the Bridgewater Police five K and I did finish first place in the town council division. How's that? Anyway, we had a good meeting tonight, a lot of spirited discussion. This is what it should be like. I wasn't happy with the result. Let voters now will decide on that question. Um, but to have a spirited discussion on issues. Is really what we are here for. Wasn't particularly um. Hopefully we don't have another one like that on that issue, but it's, it's, it's nice that we kept the decor pretty civil. And um, and, and that alone could be part of a campaign on January seventh. So um, it could be an interesting. Winter ahead of the town. So I, that's all I have tonight, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor George?
Thank you, Mr. President. Wish I had gone before Counselor Gallagher. Um. I, oh. I'll reiterate on Autumn Fest, I thought um, it was well organized. It was well attended. The weather was beautiful. Um. And actually I was there last year too. It was, it was nice to see some additional vendors there. I thought there was uh, something for everybody. Uh, the entertainment was, was good there as well. So um, I hope every year the B A puts it on. And they benefit from Mother Nature by just delivering a spectacular day. It was um, it, it was. And I also want to say thank you to B S U for allowing the B A to put that on in the quad. So I thought that was great. Town River Landing cleanup. Um, I'm just gonna say thank you very much for all that were involved. Um, in the not-for-profit putting that on. Um, that is not only for the farmer's market, they're gonna have a couple this year. But it's also to give people better access to the launch and hopefully down the road, be able to extend that so that you'll be able to. Access miles in heart through the Town River Landing versus the way you have to access it now, which kind of takes your safety in your own hands. Um, so there's, there's a long-term uh, goal for that as well. The farmer's market I'm very excited for. I think that'll be a great addition to the town as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Columbotus?
I've got nothing to say.
Thank you. Counselor Susan?
Oh, thank you. I was down at the uh, Bridgewater Business Association Fair at the college as well. It was a great thing. Many, many people showed up. And uh, I talked to a lot of them. Uh. Back down at the farmer's market, not only are there gonna be some farmers there, they're gonna have produce, they're gonna have vegetables, they're gonna have a meat truck there. But there's gonna be a number of other vendors there. There's gonna be a food truck there. There's gonna be some form of entertainment there. Back over to the college this past weekend, the high school band was there and they played fantastic. It's a great group. They've built, they kind of were down a little bit. They've built back up to a good size and they, and they did a great performance. And I thank everyone there. Thank everyone who's came here this evening and uh, carried on with our conversation. I guess you're all gonna know how I'm gonna vote on January seventh. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Wood?
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna continue promoting volunteerism. Most of you know that there's three lions uh, sitting on the, on the council here. I'm a fifteen-year lion. Um, Dr. Perry is, I think, twenty-five and Counselor Gallagher is two, twenty-two. So we've got a lot of experience. Um, the thing that attracted me to the Lions was the fact that the Lions did the decorations on the common, but. You know, maybe times are, are changing and that's a good thing. So um, you know, won't be able to do that, but I'm sure we'll be um, very active in other areas. Um, the, the second piece is um, uh, I'm also for a year now, I've been playing in the chess club. And the chess club meets in the bottom of the library every Wednesday night, which competes with Lions uh, on many Wednesdays. But um, um, Bill who organized it, Cotton, who organized it, uh, has done a great job. He has equipment. Um, yeah, clocks. He's worked with the town. He's got actually a grant for some additional pieces. It, it's, it's a very informal process. Any age is good to come in. Um, you know, I, I've lost against a five-year-old, lost against a seventy-year-old. Anybody can beat me. So you know, come on by. It's, it's, it's um, Wednesday evening. Uh, starting at six and Bill and a couple other volunteers put it together. Um, and this is Bridgewater Chess Club. It's, is the one and only that doesn't play down to prison. Um, and, and the third piece is um. Surprisingly, the robotics team is up and running and getting ready for some fall competitions. I'm not gonna be participating there. But it's another great thing that the high school does. Um, great number of volunteers. Uh, get together behind that project and um, help a lot of students. Um, and any, and now is the time, if you have students, to get involved because uh, after a certain point in December, you can't join the team, but. Um, the team, and I can tell you from personal experience, welcomes everybody into the team, right? So we talked about diversity and inclusion. And belonging, the team welcomes everybody to the team. So um, no skills needed. You get taught everything for, by the mentors. Um, and, and so, you know, there's a lot of opportunities at the town level too. So uh, keep an eye out on those. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor, and uh, Counselor Perry, another lion.
Thank you. Um, most of uh. Most things have already been said, but I do want to uh, congratulate the B B A and uh, uh, all the volunteers for putting on a, a, another great. On the past, I wasn't here to attend. I usually have a booth there for myself from my own office, but I was away uh, this past weekend. But uh, but it's always a great event that they put on, so uh, we appreciate that. Um. Secondarily, I wanted to mention uh, congratulations to uh, B R Football for their first victory this season. My uh, children are no longer are participating on the team as they've graduated, but I still keep an eye on their uh, their success. And uh, so I wish them more continued success this season. Um, and lastly, just again, thank everyone who came out tonight. I appreciate the uh, all the comments. Uh, again, I uh, myself still do not really want to see any type of retail marijuana in the town of Bridgewater. But ultimately we are a democracy, so in the end, if the voters decide, that's the way I believe for democracy works. So we'll see what uh, what comes about at the next election. Uh, that's all I got. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, for my part, I really just want to thank the citizens present here tonight and those who were here earlier and who needed to depart. Uh, I was very encouraged to see such a, a good turnout and. Yeah, as well. Uh, I certainly agree that uh, decorum was certainly observed and I think people were very considerate and very respectful and uh, that's much appreciated. Um, so that's really my only comment this evening. We, we did have actually, I think technically standing room only, so that's uh, that's very good and uh. I'm sure that kind of uh, interest and enthusiasm will uh, carry over now that we have an election date on the calendar. Uh, so once again, thank you very much. I thank you all for being here. Uh, please have a enjoyable and safe rest of the evening. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
Mr. Wood?
I'd like, I'd like to discuss it. All right. Could we have a roll call vote one more time, please?
Mr. Columbotus? Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
More?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.